All right, good evening and welcome to the November fourteenth, twenty twenty four, meeting of the Holliston School Committee. We do have one member who is participating remotely, so I'm going to read the governor's sort of statement. Pursuant to the Governor's July sixteenth, twenty twenty two Act Relative to Extending Certain COVID- nineteen Measures Adopted During the State of Emergency, suspending Certain Provisions of the Open Meeting Law, MGL CD thirty eight, Paragraph Twenty, the Holliston School Committee will be using remote participation for this meeting. The audio of this meeting is being recorded and posted to town's website as soon as possible in accordance with keeping the public informed of actions during the meeting. At this time, I will take a roll call of attendance. Frank.
Yes.
Joe.
Here.
Hillary.
Here.
Sarah.
Here.
Dawn.
Present.
Cynthia.
Yes.
And I, Dan, am here as well. So we are now called to order in session. We will first up take up the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions, comments? That includes some gifts, your packet. And we thank the PTO for all those gifts. So I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move.
Second by Dawn.
Okay. That requires a roll call vote because we are meeting as we are meeting. Frank.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Hillary.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
Dawn.
Yes.
Cynthia.
Yes.
And I, Dan, am also a yes. Moving on to our report from our student representatives.
So NHS is hosting a senior citizen dinner where theater will put on their musical Carrie for them. And this is happening next Wednesday, so the twentieth. Unified basketball is having a game versus the varsity basketball teams, and this is also happening next Wednesday on the twentieth. Yesterday, Holliston hosted the unified basketball jamboree in the gym where seven teams from the TVL came to participate. The cross-country girls are going to states. Opening night for Carrie is next Thursday, which is the musical. The Thanksgiving pep rally is coming up. Class of twenty twenty five Krispy Kreme and flag football fundraisers both went very well, and I think a lot of people had fun. The in-school mock election happened where a Republican representative came to speak and give information on the ballot questions for new voters. There was a Veterans Day assembly, which went well, and local veterans came in and spoke of their experiences and how they got involved. And there's like a new youth council, the Spoka Youth Council, where two students, Roy Holmes and Lucy Harrington, were chosen especially by the social studies department to participate.
Okay. Thank you. We will then move on to our school committee individual comment.
Only thing to bring up, obviously, the national elections are over, not just national. Can't reiterate the importance of not only getting to this, you know, sticking together, being community. We've accomplished a turn. Let's not further divide. We'll see how it goes.
Okay. Joe, I have no comment.
No comments. I just want to say congratulations to all of the fall athletes. They've been pretty amazing performances all around, from cross-country to soccer, to field hockey, volleyball, football. So it's impressive and great to watch all of the kids out there. So a lot of fun. Thank you.
Just a quick update from HMAPA, the November Fund Drive is going on through November thirtieth. November's HMAPA's Grants Drive Month, and their goal is $2,500 to continue funding the incredible arts initiatives available at Holliston Public Schools. So please go to their website to consider a donation. There's a citrus fundraiser through November thirtieth. Also, details are on the HMAPA website. And as the student representative stated, the musical Carrie starts next Thursday evening at seven thirty and runs through performances Thursday, Friday, and Saturday evenings at seven thirty. On December tenth, the high school and Rams chorus concert is at seven PM at the high school. And on December seventeenth, the high school and Rams band concert is at seven PM at the high school.
Okay. And I do not have anything, Cynthia. So now we'll move on to public comment. We did have a few, a couple people signed their public comment, and I also understand that our principals are here to talk about the start times. I don't, because the start times are so far down on the agenda, if anybody was coming to, that wanted to sort of be here for that, I don't want to necessarily move it all forward. So what I'd like to do is I'll invite to start our principals up to make any comments that they have about the, I'm just trying to, because they may be talking about something that we haven't actually presented yet. So now I'm just trying to sort of figure out. So.
There's another presentation.
Give it to them.
Okay.
Do you have a journal?
Can you, can you?
Early night.
Can we just give a high level on what the, the committee recommended, and then we can get back into the conversation later?
Okay.
Not that we're necessarily going to show up later, but just in case.
Okay, sure. The bus school start times committee met four times across four consecutive weeks. Lively discussions very often. We ended at six because that was the time we agreed to end, as opposed to ending the discussion. We knew, we also knew we had a deadline, so discussions had to end. So at the last meeting, Dr. Jordan took the obvious notes and on the criteria that's actually in your packet from him. And, you know, the things that we looked at as basically non-starters and how to kind of wedge ourselves in both time-wise and function-wise, the committee, the committee voted to do, with two bus runs, to put the Placentino and middle schools on a bus together and the Miller School and the high school on a bus together as two runs, you know, with with no firm start times, just kind of ballpark-y kind of AM versus PM type thing. So that was the, the results of the committee. We adjourned, and that was it.
Is there a recommendation on which grouping went first or second?
The first grouping was the.
Placentino.
Placentino and Rams.
And then Miller High School.
Yeah, Placentino Rams.
And just to specify, nobody's going to school at PM. Like, we're not starting at PM. When you said AM, PM, it got me nervous a bit.
I'm sorry, the first, it says Miller High School and Miller in the first.
High School, High School Miller has the first run, and Placentino Rams is the second. That is right. You're right.
It's with the memo, so.
If you would just speak up, Cynthia, since you're having problems with your hearing. Where is that, where is that disc we had? Do you still have that disc?
Oh, yeah, we usually have the.
Sure, that'd be great.
So before I, I will, are all of you looking to speak or just some of you?
I think you're helping to speak in if you had questions while they were here.
Sure. So I'll probably have to reiterate this later when we have the sort of the fulsome discussion, but I listened to all the meetings that the subcommittee had. It was a lot of really spirited, good, good debate and discussion back and forth. I think if anyone takes the time, they're on the website, I would encourage people to take that time to see how truly complex this issue is, is maddeningly complex, given the constraints that we have. And I know that what we're, what I'm certainly planning on doing and trying to work towards, and I'm confident the rest of the committee is doing that as well, is find the best solution for the most sort of peoples and really with an eye towards improving the instructional time and the, how the scheduling is working for our kids. It's going to be really challenging, and I, and I hope that we can do it in a way that, you know, people appreciate and can, are, not everyone's going to like what's the final solution is.
Next speaker, five ten.
Okay. But hopefully, we can, we can minimize that and do what is best for the district. So with that, Jamie or Regis Lanyer?
Just over here.
Yeah.
Just trying.
How's it going?
Whoever would like to come up.
Thank you so much for the opportunity for us to speak. I think we all want to say thank you and appreciate the complexity of this issue, and we know that this committee worked really hard within the constraints that they were given. For people who do scheduling all the time, we understand what variables look like and how you have to make difficult decisions. Dan, you mentioned, or Keith, you mentioned in the memo that was given to you, there were a set of variables that they took into consideration. And the one thing that wasn't written down, I'm sure it was thought of but wasn't written down, was around student safety. As the principal of our pre-K to two school, when I heard this recommendation, I have to say my breath kind of got taken away a little bit. As one of the four people who deal on a daily basis with bus behavior and different situations that happen on a bus, it's truly something I would like you to consider, to reconsider this recommendation. First, thinking about the difference of, the developmental differences in behavior and maturity between these two age groups, specifically, I'm talking about our youngest students with the middle school students. You're putting five, six, and seven-year-olds with eleven-to-fourteen-year-olds. From our youngest to oldest, that is an eight-year age gap. Our middle school students, I have in my home, middle school students, Karen and I talk, talk often about how we love this age group. That being said, developmentally, they're at a time where they're increasing their independence, their social exploration, and they're testing boundaries. It's an important thing for them to be able to do that. That's how they develop their frontal lobe. That's how they learn decision-making. It's our job to give them a place that they can make mistakes in a safe environment. And putting them on a bus with young students who are now going to be exposed to these conversations, these behaviors, discussing about relationships, social dynamics, digital content, this is going to be confusing and distressing for our younger elementary students. Our younger elementary students are going to learn vocabulary that they've never been exposed to. They're going to go home and talk about topics they should not be exposed to. Our younger students require a different structure. The way that we handle our PBIS compared to the middle school of what we're teaching our youngest students, remember, this is the first time they haven't been in a four-point harness in the backseat of their car. They're put on a bus, they're learning how to sit, they're learning expected behaviors. Think about the difference of what that looks like between a five-year-old and a fourteen-year-old. I heard from the committee, I did get to listen a bit, about how what we're hoping is to have middle school leaders. I think there are lots of middle school leaders. I think it's unfair to put that on the back of a middle school student to be able to handle what happens on the bus. We're at risk for so many inappropriate interactions. Middle schoolers are more prone to taking risks. They're developing impulse control, and they do not have a full understanding of their consequences. Common behaviors like recording videos, making jokes, using language, that seems harmless to each other, they're in a new situation when we put that in the context of younger students. I already have parents who are concerned at times about behaviors between kindergarteners and second graders. I think I've had two instances this year that before we were able to speak to a parent, they talked about going to the Holliston Police. Once we were able to talk to them and really put it into the context of age-appropriate behavior, we were able to talk about how this is a time where students are learning, that they are taking their, they're engaging in things that they don't know about yet. I won't be able to say it's age-appropriate if I put a child in the situation with an older child, thirteen, fourteen, with now a five-year-old. When we talk about safety and supervision challenges, I've heard about, well, we could put monitors on buses. We already have trouble attaining enough monitors for our mandated monitor situations. Additionally, you have to understand fifty to sixty students on a bus with a bus driver and one other adult who by law has to sit will not be able to monitor those behaviors. I've heard about cameras on buses. That is then reactionary, instead of being able to proactively put this. My biggest fear as the pre-K to two principal is actually for our middle schoolers, because we are putting really unfair expectations on our middle school students. We're expecting them to modify their natural behaviors and accommodations to accommodate much younger children, and that's just unfair. This could lead to situations and disciplinary situations that have far-reaching consequences than ever before. I'm talking about unintentionally them overstepping boundaries that are going to lead to things like Title IX investigations, or worse, other legal pieces. They have phones in their hands, and you have to imagine a child who has impulse control just by their brain is still developing, thinking it's funny to have a younger student do something. I don't want to put them in those situations. I think it's unsafe to put all of our students in those situations. And I ask you to just think about that before you make this decision.
Thank you. Any others want to?
I think Jamie said it well. If you go to the Miller age gap to the high school age gap, you could go from eight to nineteen as, as seniors on a bus. So you're looking at an eleven-year gap with some of those students. I do think high school kids are a little more self-controlled, but I do worry about the same things that Dr. Slaney shared with the committee.
Jim? James Cusack? Yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Slaney. Do you think it's more appropriate they're completely separate, or a situation where they're with Miller is more acceptable?
Well, there's lots of school systems that have K through five bus routes. It's actually a norm. Our school system is more of a rarity that we're split up the way that we are. Most school systems are K through five. And, you know, when you think of a kindergartner and a fifth grader, we wouldn't have them sitting near each other. But if we had a bus of K one and two, the next group is sixth graders. If you had a bus of three, four, and five, the next group is ninth graders. So there's that developmental continuum on a K through five bus that isn't there with the age gap splits.
Okay. Thank you very much. You're welcome to stay if you want to.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Barbara, did you want to?
Thanks.
Hi, good evening. Bob O'Ryan, fourteen Irving Place. I, at first, I always like to acknowledge the leadership. Thank you, Dr. Kuska, Dr. Menard, Dr. Jordan, Mr. Bidet, and all the principals that are here who really take our children and young adults and, and help them learn and be their best every day. So thank you for that. Second, I am part of the Holliston Drug and Alcohol Awareness Coalition, and I just want to say kudos to the high school. This is something that has always been wanted, that there'd be a cohort of students in the high school interested in this subject and about substance misuse and all that. And there are at least nine to twelve students that are actively participating, which is no small feat when there was zero last year at the same time. And the middle school also has a budding cohort interested in choosing better behaviors than not around substance use. So I just really wanted to say thank you for the support on that from that committee that I sit on. Just a little PTO snapshot. I am the president of the PTO, and I just again want to thank the school committee for always accepting, reviewing and accepting the gifts from our generous community. Currently, our pre-K through five schools, it's not, it's, they are gifts that are within all the boundaries of the law, but we've almost had $5,000 towards teachers' requests and, and building that all again within the confines of the law. And almost similar to middle and high, that we, high school, we have contributed. So just want to say thank you for supporting that. Also want to say thank you to Mr. List. We recently had a landscaping company, has two children in our school system. They cleared out all the poison ivy from one of the courtyards. And I think Mr. List just said there are more students there recently than he's ever seen. And so we're continuing to work on these spaces at the invitation of Mr. List, and I know we've done things at Placentino. Mr. Kind, you're not forgotten. We're coming in the spring. And we did just put in a sixth grade kind of with, in conjunction with the science teachers, a learning area. So again, thank you for accepting those donations through our Learning Alliance. And it's just, again, a lot of strength in this community as far as generosity and time material and money. I have, I, as a, I will transition to a parent in the community. I have a freshman, a first year in high school, and he walks to school or home, or I am his transportation. However, I did attend all of the subcommittee meetings as a community member, and I do appreciate all the work that was done and all the voices that were heard. And kudos to the subcommittee members who went out into their community and asked every, asked bus drivers, asked fellow parents and caregivers their opinions. So I know there was a lot, a lot of opinions that came through. My own opinion is the preservation of tween and teen times, later start times. There is so much data out there to support the brain health, circadian rhythms, et cetera. So I will just say that's my professional opinion as a pediatric nurse practitioner and have done that work, but also as a mom, I see the difference that my son gets to sleep a little bit later, and I thank you for considering that. And my pediatric hat, what you said made so much sense to me from a developmental standpoint. So I guess I was looking through the lenses as a mom and not at the total scope, but wow, that made a lot of sense. So good luck with your decision. I know, hopefully, the majority, the majority of people will be satisfied, but it's, I don't think it'll be easy. So thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Tracy?
Tracy Flecker, ninety-six Rolling Meadow Drive. Thank you for letting me speak this evening, and thank you for all you do for our children here in the community. I'm a mother of five children in the Holliston Public School System. My oldest is a freshman, my youngest a kindergartner. Speaking here tonight on behalf of not just myself, but a number of families in the community who are interested in opening up the conversation around the high school block schedule. The current schedule is not in the best interest of our high school students. As an educator myself for twenty years, I have witnessed firsthand what gaps in instruction do for our students. The nation talks about a summer slump when the kids go ten weeks without direct instruction in one area of their education, and our current setup is asking our high schoolers at times to go up to close to ten months without instruction in a particular subject area. Although we're delivering instruction in quantity in that smaller amount of time, we are missing the continuity. And that the districts across the state have realized is beneficial for long-term learning and reception of their knowledge. How is it that the number of schools with this block schedule in the state of Massachusetts can be counted on one hand? Holliston is behind in this conversation of change, in what is in the best interest for our kids. We are not providing support for all of our students across areas as well. We as a town pride ourselves on our language development in particular. We have a renowned immersion program, access to early education, which is phenomenal, and yet we get to the high school and that drops for some of our kids, and the clubs that are offered are not the same as direct instruction from an educator. If we look at our high achieving students, we ask some of them to take courses and finish the course material and then have a gap before they are actually taking their AP Advanced Placement tests. And without direct study in those areas, regiment and study routines and learning opportunities, we are not allowing them to succeed in the way that they are capable of, and we are being outperformed. If we stop to examine our high needs students in this district, how are we meeting the time on learning standards that are laid out in a standard IEP if we are not providing instruction on a daily basis for some of these students that need it? We're not. The expectation that families can hire outside support in areas if a student is struggling because of these gaps that our current curriculum and current scheduling is offering ignores obvious equity issues across the town. I am here tonight to ask the school committee to require the union to open up this conversation around a new schedule, not in what is only best for our teachers, but particularly for our students. My understanding is that the new contract that was signed over the summer included language that gave the ability to change the schedule or even start the conversation in the hands of the union. I can only assume that the language was approved on your end with a plan on how that would look moving forward when there were issues getting a conversation started. I know how difficult it is to make change as an educator. We have new mandates that are thrown at us pretty constantly from the state and different areas, and we're being forced to change the way we teach on a sometimes daily basis, it feels like. I know that asking a teacher who currently has a seventy-five-minute prep to change that down to potentially a forty-five-ish minute prep is not appealing. I know it's going to be frustrating. I know that teachers who have taught one class perhaps their entire career, who might now be asked to teach a second, are not going to be happy that they have to now readapt, and it's going to require a lot of work on their end and PD and whatnot to make sure that they're prepared to do that. But I also know that there are many teachers who understand what is best for our children, who understand and are willing to make those changes if they are given the chance to do so. I am pro-union and all the work they do to support our teachers, but at the end of the day, we owe all the children of Holliston a chance to have their learning needs met. Our current block schedule does not do that in a sufficient manner, and our continued fall in state rankings reiterates that point as well. So I would like to request that the school committee puts appropriate pressure on our teachers' union to look at the three hundred-plus other districts in the state for guidance on how to design a schedule that would support all of our students in their quest for an appropriate education. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Tracy? It's, it's interesting because as we went through that with, with the contract, you know, we definitely were willing to keep an open mind on the block scheduling, but as we've gone through, and I've done some more research and stuff on it, I mean, I do, I do definitely think that it's, it's time to move away from the block scheduling. So I hope that, I know Mr. List is doing a presentation later, so I don't know if he's got an update for us, but I hope that, you know, he takes that in mind and everyone doesn't, or how the rest of the committee feels, but you make a compelling case.
Thank you.
Thank you. No pressure, Mr. List. I'm sure he's got it all solved, right? Is there anyone on Zoom that, that wanted to?
I just, I could read a comment. Do you want me to read the comment?
Did they want, I mean, I just, first off, if anyone just used the raise hand function, if you'd like to, to make a comment.
Sure. I, let me see if I can, can you hear me?
Yeah, so just your name and address and.
Okay, great. Yeah, thanks. Thank you so much for making this available on Zoom. It's good to be here. My wife, Grant Gannaway, eleven Monoc Circle, something. So I have a, a student who's a middle school student and also have a student at Miller and two students at Placentino. And I just wanted to comment and just emphasize that I, we fully agree with Dr. Slaney's comments about separating kids that are young in kindergarten on the bus from kids who are old in middle school. I just, knowing our kids and knowing what would happen, I just feel like it would be a, a very bad situation for the youngest kid to be with, with the older kids. So just grateful for Dr. Slaney's comments and just fully, fully agree and support those. That's, that's all I want to say.
Great. Thank you very much.
That's, yes, it's incorrect. Can I just add one thing?
Yeah.
I have to echo my leader's viewpoints tonight. I'm, I'm going to speak for my fifteen years as an educator. This is my thirtieth year in education. I was a middle school special educator for five years, and elementary, I taught first, third, and fourth for ten years. So I feel I can speak confidently about the, the age groups that we're talking about, in particular, the little ones going on the buses with our middle school students, and also having a young grandchild, the thought of my grandchild in another year or two, going on with an eighth grader. I love all of those ages. I enjoyed working with all of them, but I would be petrified of my now-three-year-old grandson in another year and a half or so riding a bus with an eighth grader, because our sixth through eighth grade students are meant to learn, as Dr. Slaney pointed out, the social, emotional learning skills that they acquire. They're growing, they're developing, their hormones are changing. They would not intentionally hurt our younger students. They would unintentionally say things and forget that our, our students are there. If you look at the heights of our buses, the seats, our little ones in the front, those kindergartners, they won't even see that they're there, and they will forget that. So again, I speak out of the love and joy of working with both middle school students and younger elementary students, and I, I just think that this is not in the best interest of our students. And I know this committee was established and did the best they could with the limitations that we have, but I hope we can explore some other options, because I do think with our enrollment shifts and other potentials that have changed, I, I think there could be some other options in place.
Great, thank you. Anyone else here for public comment? Okay, so we'll, we'll get more. Okay, so we'll get more into that in a little bit. Keith and Dr. Jordan, if you don't mind, I think we do have some students here for the Global Citizens Update, so maybe we'll take them now and allow them to then go home and study. If that works.
Sounds good.
So if you all just quickly introduce yourselves, let me give you your addresses though. But?
Okay, so my name is Kaitlin Mills, and thank you for letting us talk tonight and giving you an update on our program. I'm one of the teachers at the high school. I teach social studies and history. I'm also one of the teachers that created the Global Citizens Program. There's four of us. Three of them couldn't be here tonight. I've taken on the job coordinating the entire program, and then the other three through advisement help assist in advising the students and helping out with different aspects of the program. So we were here a couple of years ago when the program was first launched, and it's been some time, and I know we have some new faces on the committee, so we thought it would be a great time for us to come back to give you a brief update on the progress of the program and then hear from some of our students and the work that they're doing this year and have been doing over the past few years. So this is the third year of the program officially being launched and underway. Each year, we've had more and more students, particularly the incoming freshmen, joining the program, and I'm excited to say that right now, we have 87 students who are currently enrolled in the program, and that's grades nine through 12. These students are involved in globally oriented coursework. There's two major courses that are all required to take. First one is the Intro to Global Citizenship Class that they take with Ms. Frost. And many of these students here, they've taken that with her. She has two sections right now, Term Two. And then the second course is what students take with me as 10th graders and 11th graders, and that's service learning, which is a project-based course in which they're working essentially on their capstone projects. So you'll hear a little bit more about some of the projects that have been going on. In addition to those courses, they do take four additional credits of globally oriented courses that are very across the different disciplines. So there's opportunities for students to take classes within the humanities, within the sciences, the maths, business, language, et cetera. So it's a really, it's a program that attracts all kinds of different types of students and whatever their interests and passions are. But again, it brings us back to that whole globally oriented work. In addition to the coursework, though, the students also participate in globally oriented activities. We refer to them as passport activities. They very much are involved in leadership work. We have a mentoring program that our students are involved with just within the GCP. And then we, this year, have our first GCP trip that we're taking this spring in April. We're going, and all of these students here are going. We're very excited. We just had a meeting, and we're going to be going to northern Italy and southern France. There's 36 students, six adult chaperones, and we're going to be doing a sustainable farming trip, and we're just so, so excited about it. We can't wait. So I'm going to stop talking, and I want to hear from the students. So we have two different groups here. So I've got four 10th graders here, some young men that are here to speak about their involvement in the program, but mostly they are currently taking service learning with me, and they're starting essentially their capstone projects. So I'm going to let them talk a little bit about that. And then our second student you'll hear from is a current 12th grader, Ishika, and Ishika's been in the program now for a few years, and you'll get to hear from her about her capstone and how that's evolved over time. So why don't, do you want to scoot over and they can come over here?
So I'll kick this off. Hi, my name is Charlie Lenzel. I am a sophomore at Holliston High School, and we are Project Energy. So this is something that, this is the name that we've coined ourselves as. And one thing that all of us have noticed, we're all active in the sports at Holliston High, I'm in lacrosse, football, track, soccer. One thing we notice from traveling to all of those schools is just the amount of like sustainable, this energy acts as that. We see solar panels, we see like sometimes charging stations. It's just interesting, and we noticed that here, we really don't have any of that. So our goal is to establish a electric vehicle charger in the Holliston High School parking lot. And we've already been working on this. We started the service learning class this semester, and so far, we've already talked with local officials who have already installed local chargers. We've scoped that area, we've tallied cars, and we've done a lot of other stuff. So I'm going to give it over to Wyatt, who's going to tell us about the next part.
For this project, we were thinking to, for the charging station, we met with James Keast. He works with the town. He put the charging station in for the one behind Superep. And he, like, we met with him, and he suggested, like, just left of the H-Cap parking over there, the, like, main energy source for the high school is on the grass, like, across the, well, actually, like, a source of energy is across the grass by the telephone pole. So he thinks that we could get the charging station installed without interfering with bus traffic or, like, digging up the road.
So also, we obviously know that a charge is, like, not free, so we had a fundraiser the weekend before Halloween at Spooker Fest, which is basically like a soccer event for young kids. It's scrimmage is, like, lots of candy and prizes. And we were able to raise a little over $250, which obviously an electric vehicle charger isn't going to cost $250. But Mr. Keast during our meeting assured us that, like, most of the money for the charger wouldn't come out of pocket, but rather, like, I forget the name of the company.
EverSource.
EverSource. EverSource should cover most of it, and like government grants. So what we raised, while it's like small, could be used to cover, like, the credit card company costs to, like, use where you'd pay for the energy, or like the lines to paint the spot, or like stuff for the sign. And he showed us that was like a really good idea to do the fundraiser, and it was fun doing it over there for like seven hours at Marshall Street. We sold baked goods and hot chocolate and Rice Krispie treats and brownies. It was a lot of fun. I'm very glad we did it.
So then we've already mentioned James Keast, who's the facilities director in town, but we met with him very recently and earlier this year, and he kind of gave us an outline of, like, the grants and stuff that we would need to apply for in order to get the money for the charger. For the grants in Massachusetts, if we got enough grants, we could get 100% of the charger money covered by the state, so none of it would come out of our pockets. And we've also met with Dr. Jordan earlier in the year, and we talked about like logistics of the charger, and like what it would look like, and where it would be, and stuff like that.
And one more thing to mention that I just want to say was, it's really just cool getting out there in the community, and as a bunch of just 16-year-old boys, I think it's really interesting to see how much, like, you can really accomplish. Like, going into this class, I really did not know what me and my group of friends were going to do, who just, good for all the times, we're just, we're just boys. But it's really cool to see us come together and really formulate something, and it's just amazing how much we can really accomplish when we put our minds to something.
Awesome. Thank you.
Dan, would we fund this? We didn't have any money to go paying for it.
So Ishika now can speak about her involvement in the program and her capstone.
Well, first, I would like to thank the school committee for offering their time to let us speak about our lovely program and what our coordinators have done. And so of course, my name is Ishika Gandhi. I'm a senior, and I have started this, this program since my freshman year. I was, I think, in the early stages of this program, and I was, in the spring of my freshman year, I had been offered an opportunity to work with Mrs. Frost, who is the English teacher here at the Holliston High School. And she gave me this opportunity to co-teach a class as my capstone project. And I was kind of a little confused at the time, like, can a student co-teach? But Mrs. Frost assured me that one thing about the GCP program in Holliston is that they give this opportunity for students to go outside of the box and really just be leaders in this community and give back to students. And so Mrs. Frost assured me about this, and I worked with her to create this class called Fashion Through the Ages, which I went to the admin and superintendent and the principals. I had presented this in my sophomore year during the quarter, and then after that, there's the law history, junior year I taught, and then this year, first term, senior year, I had taught again with Mrs. Frost. And my class is based on, not just like general fashion, but it's actually more on sustainability. So fashion, fast fashion, consumerism, and we teach students on the marketing level, and we also teach students on culture appropriation, all these different type of things through the lens of fashion. So we try to bring that whole idea of the SDG goals and bring that into the class, and it's a project-based class, so we have students really create their own projects, be creative, be leaders in the class, and give that community and that space for students to be free. And yeah, that's pretty much how my class is. So thank you.
So back to the charging station. What do you gentlemen, what are your thoughts on the next steps?
You got it, you got it.
So when we talked to Mr. Keast, unfortunately, it's going to take a lot longer than the semester that we have for the class. It's going to, he said the process takes about a year.
Government's low.
So we're going to try to continue the project on the Capstone Plus Trail, which is the capstone project, obviously, if you finish in the service learning class, you get the credit, but if you continue it after the service learning class, you get like a sort of bonus endorsement. So we're hoping that we will be able to keep continuing working on it for, hopefully, through our senior year to earn the Capstone Plus credit.
And what are your thoughts on how the, sort of, the progression of the project?
Like the next step? Yeah, so the next step would be we'd have to apply for the grants, which we haven't done yet. So the Mass EEP grant through EverSource is like the main one that we'll hopefully get up to 100% on, and then there's other ones that we can apply for if we don't get 100% of the money. And after that, we'd have to pick a location, which would probably be right out here, like Wyatt mentioned earlier, and then we would just have to figure out the logistics of getting installed.
Who would be utilizing this, this charging station? Is it anybody in the high school community or?
Yeah.
We did a, like, a survey almost, and we found eight electrical vehicle, vehicles in the parking lot, two student, I mean, eight, six of them were student drivers, and then the other two were teachers. So we were thinking we could, like, let these different kids, like, or teachers, charge their vehicles during the school day, and then after school hours, people from the community could come and, like, charge.
And would there be assigned days? I mean, there are more vehicles than charging stations.
There's, there's like an app for the one behind Superep. You can, like, sign up for days or times that you need to charge, so.
Did you talk to the teachers? They'll lose their parking spot, yeah.
Have you considered discussing this also with the Selective, because I know that they have a revolving account for charging stations in town? The little one?
The little one you have.
What's that?
It's not self-sustaining.
I just don't own it.
But yes, they're more than welcome to come to the Capstone.
I think that might be a great idea.
Yes.
But then keep us in the loop, and you know, some of this, obviously, you'll be able to work on with Mr. List and the other administrators, but you know, good work.
How does the revenue work from people that pay? Sorry?
We're not that rabid right now.
No, I mean, I was just wondering.
If you listen as your esteemed colleague at the Selective, there's not enough revenue to cover the costs.
There's enough revenue from the charging station because people pay for it.
You outsource it to ChargePoint or just something like that, and they run a program that?
Well, if we can get that, that would be important. It's a revenue source. I heard.
It's a good idea, but I don't, I don't think we got it from other schools more than likely.
Help fund buses.
Let's not go there.
Thank you guys for the feedback.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right, so I know it's only November, but we are going to start talking about the fiscal year 2026 budget. And I will turn that over to Mr. Keast and Dr. Jordan.
Containing your packets?
You know, can you project anything?
I might even belong to it. What are you controlling? Containing your packets is part one of the budget process. We usually do the budget process in three parts. First is payroll, second is non-payroll, non-special education costs, and the third is special education costs. We'll do the other two in December and in January. We break, we break the payroll down by either bargaining unit or other functional areas. It starts with, we state what the 25 budget is. There are payroll adjustments that happen between the time we did the budget and when we do this. Apply steps if they're appropriate, apply lanes if they're appropriate, and to put the color that's been either contracted for or what we project for people's raises for next year. Putting all that together with making an adjustment for vacancies and offsets, offsets are basically what we, revenues that we generate, we offset payroll with in some instances, and that's how much we do here. It leaves us with a budget that has a $1.6 million, $1.7 million increase. Back in May, just to kind of jump ahead, back, I think, May is kind of backwards, behind. Back in May, we projected a number for what the override, the second year of the override, which is what fiscal year 26 would be, and this is in line, keeps us in line with that number. So, you know, we, at this stage, you know, again, we're holding to the idea that we're not going to need another override, at least certainly not for payroll anyway, so.
Did you really?
Certainly not for payroll. That's a completely true statement. So, so yes, it was a little jolly, I know, so it's not a lot of excitement here, but any questions?
What's going to change, what do you think can change?
Obviously a lot between now and the end of the year, but since this is payroll, obviously, what are the factors to think about as?
As we go, as we go into the budget year, I mean, we're, you know, when we did the projection based on the override, we modeled what had been modeled by the town for us going forward, which is a three and a quarter percent increase. That would be the biggest thing that would possibly impact us the quickest. Payroll will adjust naturally through layoffs, layoffs, Jesus Christ, through retirements. Sorry. There are no layoffs. Through retirements and other potential adjustments. We can lay me off now, okay? I'm done. Thank you.
Let me know when you're on tag.
Keith, I guess through this, is this, it can't go up from here, right?
Well, yes, it can, because it can from the standpoint of, you know, we get a vac, we have a vacancy.
Yep.
And we have to replace that. If the best candidate that we can find is a higher rate, that would be a higher rate. You know, so again, it can go up in general. It doesn't, this is in general the high point for the budget process. Also, there are two, there are two collective bargaining units who are, I have an assumption in for, because they're not completed yet, so I have an assumption for theirs, as well as the people who are on individual contracts, I have an assumption in for those. And the negotiated rates, when they negotiate their raises for next year, may be higher as well. So there are places that it can go up. In general, it goes down.
Okay. Also, if you mind, just, I mean, this is, as we do the new initiatives, if, depending on where the final budget comes out after we do all the perks, that could, that could change this, but that we would have to be making those decisions practically.
And our offsets could go down if we were impacted by school choice or athletic revolving went down, I mean, if athletics.
Right, right. And again, in general, we don't, we don't rely on 100% of the money from the current, the year in that. We usually work off some of the remaining balances so that it's never 100% of risk on that, so.
Any other questions for Dr. Jordan?
Just to confirm, there are no layoffs. Just to make sure everyone's on the record.
We're not currently anticipating.
Yes.
In November.
Frank, as you mentioned, kind of classes in there, transportation can fluctuate significantly as far as the cost.
Well, I guess I was talking more about payroll.
With that, yeah, as being an offset as well.
One, one thing I did ask Mr. Bude to put together for me is a enumeration of what money we receive annually in, in grants. They're pass-through grants. They do come from the state, but the, the sort of ultimate funding source is the Department of Education. And most of this goes to offsetting special education costs as well as some other smaller grants. But not, so, and so this is separate from the talent appropriation for our budget. So in 20, in fiscal year 2023, we received $974,000. In fiscal year 2024, we received just over $1 million. And budgeted for this year is just under $1 million. So we are currently relying upon almost $1 million from the federal government that comes mostly, I think mostly are all from the, the Department of Education. So as we all pay attention to what's going on, I would be cognizant of that and how things can change and they can seem far away, but have significant potential impacts on, on us right here in rural halls. So. One, $1 million is, is about two and a half percent of our budget. So that are our town appropriated budget.
The size of our override too.
The.
It's like Beetlejuice. You say it one more time?
The other, the other piece too, Dan, is, is the, the federal government also funds part, part of our lunch program, our free lunch program, free lunch and breakfast program. So while the state has made it free, this, the, the federal still covers the free reduced charter. So again, while it's quad, that one's quasi pass-through, but again, while it doesn't impact directly, you know, what we do in our appropriation, it does impact other areas.
Does that come from the Department of Education or Health and Human Services? We also know there's nothing going on there.
That, that, the, the piece that comes from the, the free and reduced, the federal portion is Health and Human Services through the state, but a direct, as opposed to pass-through for the, for the grants, which the state takes a portion of to manage that. So.
Well, HHS will be fine. I'll get through that.
Okay. It's, it's like 240, 270 historically in that range. Most of, again, most of our free lunch program is not free and reduced students. It's students who in theory can pay.
Okay. Any more questions about the, the start of our budget process?
Next steps are January?
Uh, we'll get it.
December.
December.
Around the override.
You're excused. Um, not really.
Careful.
All right. So we will move along. I will note that we are 25 minutes ahead of schedule.
Okay.
We'll, we'll, we'll look backwards to our central office updates.
I just wanted to focus on a couple of things. Dr. Jordan, myself and Principal Manning and Tessa Piantadossi went to Washington DC last week to collect our National Blue Ribbon Award for our middle school. It was quite exciting to be part of that process. We wish we could have taken more people with us. There were limitations to that, but we were happy on behalf of the school to collect that award. And then today, connected to the National Blue Ribbon Award, I received an email from US News Best Schools and it said that Robert Adams Middle School is now in the top 40% of middle schools in the state of Massachusetts, making it one of the best middle schools. So our rankings for our middle school have also improved as a result of these changes. So I mean, it's all exciting and I'll get you more as we go into rankings later in the year again, how these things impact. But right now, we're in a really solid place at the middle school and a sign of hopefully even greater things to come. That's probably, I'll, I'll save that for now.
Sure. Uh, Dr. Ryan?
Yes. Can you pull up the presentation? Well, Dr. Cusco's pulling up the presentation. I just wanted to inform everybody that next Tuesday, we have a very exciting evening planned for our multilingual learner families. It's at Placentino and Miller Shared Cafeteria from 6:00 to 7:00. We will have food and we will have lots of different vendors here. You see the police here tonight. They're gonna be there and represent. And we have a lot of different groups and hopefully our families will be able to find valuable for them and we'll have translators there. This is just a very quick presentation on some of the things that we had during our last PD day, which happened on November 5th. Let's scroll down. At the elementary schools, we spent the morning working on Eureka Math. And the teachers had the opportunity to really kind of struggle with and process together what the students should be done, how the students should be demonstrating mastery based on the lesson goal. And they also had a great discussion about how assessment was going to happen. Let me scroll down. We also had Learners Network both at the middle school and high school. And they really went over menu planning with our teachers, planning templates and going over those high leverage concepts. Scroll down please. iReady, which is our diagnostic assessment tool and, and then actually creates pathways for students to gain mastery of standards, came and presented to both Placentino and Miller, how to really dig into their data and what next steps to take. Scroll down please. And then we had Dr. Papas brought in a wide variety of presenters for our Unified Arts. And she actually had a lot of different districts come in to Holliston and also received the PD. In Health and Wellness, we had two experts that are DESI presenters and they really went over Massachusetts law, policy and frameworks and best practices for health and wellness. For our Visual Arts, we had a gentleman named Scott Schuler and he went over about how we should assess our students on the mastery of standards in visual arts, which is something that a lot of the, the teachers are trying to process, how we can do better. And finally, in world language, the presenter went over how to address the diverse needs of all our world language teachers, as well as designing and implementing communicative world language tasks. If you can scroll down the other way. Thank you. We had a wide variety of other PD offerings and we really have targeted different groups to meet their needs. At the elementary school at Placentino, they were working on curriculum documents, understanding by design documents. For our L teachers, they worked on WIDA modules. Our librarians did some American Library Association training, which we totally appreciated and we will continue doing that. Some of our special educators were able to work on the Bloom Method app, which helps them process the new IEP. Safety care training we have. The high school level, we have utilizing data disciplinary literacy. So really how all teachers are responsible to teach literacy in the content area. At the middle school, we worked on performance-based assessments in science and that's how the MCAS test is going to be given this year. At the middle school and high school, we had Kami training, which is a AI tool that will enable the teachers to do, enable a lot of supports for our students. At the middle school and, and Miller, there are five through eight writing workshop as well as having alignment between the two schools. We had additional trainings for other groups, bases and network transition programming, Director BD was able to work on, argumentative alternative communication, Director BD arranged for that too. Accept collaborative school refusal. And then Jerry Alverne, Director Jerry Alverne was able to make a shared F by FS and HPS resource fair, which was wonderful for counselors and other people to realize what we have right in our backyard for services for our students. And then finally, our nurses went to Boston Children's Hospital Community Education Initiative. We just had our meeting, I'm sorry, Karen, was that yesterday? Thank you. I'm trying to remember. So PD council meeting yesterday, which we really dive deep into the results and use that to make further plans, as well as the principals do that with their leadership teams at their level, as well as myself with the curriculum staff. Do we all kind of dive into that and say, how can we improve? What are people asking for? What changes do we need to make going forward? Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for Dr. Jordan?
I guess in terms of, so at the high school, do we, do we talk about the new math curriculum too? Was that?
Yes. All Learners Network.
Okay. But beyond All Learners Network, like?
All Learners Network was a day training for both the middle school and high school, but they were separate.
But that's not just math.
That was just the math teachers, math teachers.
It was the implementation of the new curriculum. So it was using All Learners Network to support students in implementing the new curriculum. So they were given training and they worked in their department to implement what they learned in All Learners Network and bring that into their lessons.
To reveal. So both at the middle school and the high school, they got to figure out how they were going to use reveal to use the strategies that ALM taught them.
Okay. So it was learning All Learners Network.
Yes.
But it wasn't really discussing reveal yet or how it's.
Yes. No, they, no, All Learners Network is really how they're gonna differentiate and use the strategies that they employ to meet all learners. And then they use specifically the, the resources that we have. So they, they addressed reveal within the model. So All Learners Networks facilitates discussions on how to differentiate using different curricular resources. So they are talking specifically about reveal. And then when they are doing training with our elementary schools, they're talking specifically about Eureka Mesquer.
Okay. Understood.
Okay. Uh, any further update from our finance and operations team?
I wanted to comment about the National Ribbon Ceremony. It was just a incredibly rewarding experience to be, be there, not only just, just to listen to the National Teacher of the Year, but also to the Commissioner of Education and just many kind of other educators that share in what we do here in Holliston as well. I was just incredibly proud as the former principal of the middle school of some of the work that our teachers do there in Holliston as a whole, but you know, at the middle school. And what I heard over and over was just this push for this deep love and compassion for each other and your neighbor and for your students in your community, followed with a deep understanding of high expectations for others, not only for your students, but for yourself and for the community. Combined with like a significant focus on equity, equity and the diverse needs of students. And it was nice to see the kind of a lot of alignment to the intervention structures, literacy work that we did at the middle school, along with some of the pre-K through 12 alignment that we're working to do here, here in, in Holliston. So it was fantastic. I left rejuvenated and ready to rock and roll. So.
Great. Um, moving on, we have a, a job description. Keith or who's in it?
All right. Talk to it or pull it up. What's, what's?
I don't know if we need to pull it up.
Yeah, I'll just. So maintenance director is a position that we've always had. The, this is gonna be a mid-year retirement that is opening up. What we don't have is, we don't have kind of a, a job description to work off of. So this is just kind of a, a description that describes our current maintenance director's work. And it's consistent with what we are looking for, but also what, what we've always, always had. So if there are any questions about, you know, that the maintenance director's roles and responsibilities, what they do for our district, the, you know, the oversight that they have with the buildings, I'm, I'm open for questions.
So this is what there, there's no added responsibilities from what they're currently doing. Any questions? Cynthia, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, I couldn't hear David, whether he said that the current maintenance director is retiring. Is that what you said?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So with that, I would plan a motion to approve the job description for the maintenance director.
Moved by John.
Second by Frank.
Okay. All those, well, well called. Frank?
Yes.
Bro?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Cynthia?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well.
Yes.
Yes. Got, got it twice.
Eight zero.
Eight zero. Um, okay. Great. Thank you. All right. Report from our subcommittees. Applications? Okay. Policy?
Um, we have our next subcommittee meeting this Wednesday, the 20th at 4:15 for policy.
Okay. And do you want to just do super new values and draft move?
Yeah. So the subcommittee is going to convene on November 26th at 4:15 in central office to review over Dr. Cusco's goals and, you know, take a, take a deeper dive, a look at that and the rubric and evaluation tools that we'll be using to evaluate her this year.
Good. Thank you. Budget?
Yeah. And budget had a meeting this evening at 6:00 PM and we went over the budget part one that was presented today, asked some questions about that, went over any updates on capital projects and the FY25 operating budget. And we're, I mean, I think we'll deflect until the next meeting, any FY26 capital budget and the beginning of that discussion. So we anticipate we'll have another meeting in advance of our next general school committee meeting because we want to review part two before it's presented to you.
Good. Um, we went to old business and Mr. List, if you want to come talk about the international trip as well as the, any update you may have on the high school schedule?
Just that the international trip is, was so popular that we had to create a second bus to Japan. So, so the expectation was like 20 to 25 students and there were 70 who wanted to go. So that was surprising, but awesome at the same time. And so that trip, we are waiting on the final itinerary from it because the buses are running at the, so the buses are running at the same, it's the same trip, but they're running differently. So we have to wait to get you guys the full itinerary just because of this, this, the addition of the second trip, because it's, it's not the same, but it's the same trip. So, so we'll get that piece out. In terms of the schedule, we had a meeting this past week to, to look at a, a schedule that was brought forward. And we're gonna meet again next week, sort of looking at the notes here, to continue to, to review some schedules that address the concerns that have been laid out over the past year and a half. At this point, what we really need to do is, is do a sort of pros and cons of each of these schedules that have been laid out as a committee. They're all different types of schedules. Some are like hybrid versions of schedules. Some are pretty standard, what you would consider like a rotation, a drop and rotation. But we really need to now get those out in front of our committee and then be able to share those structures out with students, staff, families to then get feedback from them. So hopefully we can make some, some, some movement forward on those and come together and, and have one that stands out. Right now, we don't have one that necessarily is like, this is the one we're all going with. But, but hopefully from another couple of meetings, we can get there.
So do you anticipate putting a survey out to families and students then?
So we, yeah, we did talk about, in our next meeting, we do have some information that we need additionally from, from staff, from students and from families. So one of the agenda items for our next meeting, I'm just sort of looking at my notes here, is that we, we need to draft that. Because again, that's going to impact once we have all these structures, because we have to create structures that speak to, that answer the. the, the contract, that meet the needs of students. And so there's those pieces. And then once we have all of that, we now need to then share that out to get feedback from, from folks. But again, we don't have necessarily one that's sort of, we're looking at, we still have a ways to go to get down, to narrow it down.
Obviously, as per the contract, January 10th is a looming deadline?
It is, yep, it's coming.
We thought we were close around the bus start times.
I don't, I, I, don't get me. So without you. But I, I, I hope, you know, I, I think everyone is working hard and I, I hope that we can come up with a solution that addresses, you know, my concerns. I mean, as we talked about, about 15% of kids right now can't fully even access DSP because of the different either IPs and pullout services that they have, or they're in Vander Chorus and all the other different inequities that there are in our, in our current schedule. So just encourage everyone to, to keep working.
Thank you.
So we meet December 12th next.
We'll, we'll talk about that maybe soon.
Okay. I'll be here, why not?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. It's on three times, but getting into the, the start time. So we've done the update. Is there anything else that we want for an update or is it sort of?
Does it make sense? I mean, I know Keith gave you the highlight, well, read the bullets essentially. Should we read through the recommendation? Is that something that?
If you'd like to. Was that not the recommendation?
I mean, it was. It's, it's going to be somewhat repetitive, but I think there, there are pieces in there that.
I, I think a number of folks met for a total of eight hours or more and I think it makes sense to look through it.
Good.
You want to read it?
All right, Keith, you'll share. Dr. Jordan, clerk, just vice.
Dear Holliston School Committee, thank you for entrusting the School Bus Start Times Committee with the task of studying the impact of additional instructional times to the school day on transportation and start end times for schools within the district. The complexity of the variables involved prove to be a challenging and attempting to find consensus on a single schedule for the district. That said, the group reached agreement on many factors that they recommend the school committee consider in their decision. It is a recommendation of the School Bus Start Times Committee that the school, that the Holliston School Committee take into account the following considerations and priorities in their decision connected to the school's start times and bus runs for the '25-'26 school year. This list includes, one, the district day is not to start before 7:30 AM nor end after 4:00 PM. Two, the scheduling of schools should be thoughtful around student sleep at Holliston High School and Robert Adams Middle School, limit the impact on teacher retention and limit the impact on after-school activities, including but not limited to sports, clubs, extracurriculars and after-school jobs. Three, Holliston High School and Robert Adams Middle School should not start, should start no earlier than 7:50 AM. While many of the variables that impact transportation and school start times may be outside of the purview of the School Bus Start Times Committee, and the following scenario may not be possible based on variables outside of the school committee and administration, the school committee, the committee recommends the following schedule for future consideration. Busing, so two runs, pairing the high school and Miller in the first run and then Placentino and Robert Adams Middle School in the second run. 8:00 AM start for the first school, give or take 10 minutes, and 3:43 end time for the last school. The committee recognizes and supports changes to Holliston School Committee policy and infrastructure within the school property and in the community to reduce the length of bus runs, including but not limited to, limited to consolidating Holliston High School ridership and pickup locations in efforts to end the district day before 3:43 PM. The committee encourages the school committee to engage, engage the select board and town administrator for traffic assistance, potentially police or traffic guards, sidewalks and additional infrastructure supports that will assist in getting students safely and quickly to campus by walking or biking. Lastly, create a bus schedule and school-based procedures that limit idling buses full of students in the morning. Thank you for your consideration of this recommendation, School Bus Start Times Committee.
Great.
And just as a recap, we had parent volunteers, we had a number of teacher representatives, and then?
A select board.
A select board member, Dr. Jordan and Mr. Breda, you were representatives on behalf of the administrators? Okay. And maybe the teachers did like a, a survey of, as they've been along this process with the four meetings and I'm sure you've talked to administrators as we went through this as well? Okay.
In the survey, we weren't, I mean, we provided an oral summary of the data, it wasn't, it wasn't passed around, so.
Okay.
Was, did the committee vote on this recommendation?
Yes.
And so was that, was it unanimous?
No.
Majority?
What was the final vote?
12, one and one. 12, four, one against and one sustained abstain.
So what I think, like, now is first, I'd like to dissolve with me. Put that to bed. And then move on. I, I know there was a little bit of confusion that there is, you know, a note here for potential vote. I think I meant that more as far as the next steps go. I don't anticipate voting on a, on a decision tonight. I don't know that it's shared by everyone else, but I think that that would be premature. But giving a, oh, no, and everything like that, just wanted to have it on there so as to leave our options open. But Karen, it seems like there's not going to be the interest in the committee, which I agree with, to make votes and we have a lot of work to do, I think. So first, I will entertain a motion to dissolve the Bus Start Times Advisory Committee, thanking them for their work. And all right, and then again, as I stated at the beginning of the meeting, I would, I would strongly encourage people to, to listen to this meeting, it is, it is long. Sometimes you have to put in the volume because Keith is very loud and you can hear the microphone. So, but you, you can hear them. And the, the last one was actually a good setup, but unfortunately it wasn't a little bit of technical difficulties, but the final conversation.
Yeah, we got that second half in there.
But there is a, a lot of variables that go into this. And one that I forgot to mention obviously earlier was the, the, the commitments and the, the things that we discussed during the override and that, you know, 65.5% of the town, sorry, 65.5% of the voters, almost 40% of the town came out to support the override and, and, you know, support teachers, support schools, but also to support this work and then the commitments that we made. So trying to keep within those commitments as well, I think is incredibly important. So, anyway, but this was a motion to dissolve the committee advisory committee.
So? Second by Frank.
Okay. Frank?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Cynthia?
Yes.
Again, I made a yes as well, so thank you very much to all those who served. We appreciate it. You can now go back to discussing next yourselves. So.
Thoughts? Lots to think through. Never was easy. Dr. Slaney, what she said tonight was profound. I think we have to continue, I think we have a confine we still are working within in terms of what, when we want to start and when we want to end. Now, who goes when? I think it's going to be the big answer. And I think some of the combinations we need to think about, we need to be outside the box. If this was an easy decision, then we would have made it already. I know we only have six weeks left though.
Really less than that.
I know, but.
Can I just, I'm in comment, you know, when I started here in July of 2020 during COVID, meeting nobody but by Zoom, and in three weeks, we put together with this leadership team, an amazing product to get our children back to school, and that seemed insurmountable at the time. We were one of very few schools that had our children here pre-K to three, five days a week on campus if they chose to be here, which was the majority. And every student had a teacher in front of them, whether by hybrid or in person. We were very uncommon at the time. Most schools were only open four days a week and the fourth, fifth day was a prep day for teachers, but almost no schools had opportunities for the majority of pre-K to three to be in person every single day. And the reason I say that is I walked in not knowing anything about this community, not having met anybody. And in a short time, I had to trust the leaders in front of me. We made a very difficult decision and it was the right decision because we relied on the expertise of the people that know the children the best. I'm concerned that some of the voices were not in the room from some of us that are experts in education and some of the leaders that should have been present for some of these conversations because I really firmly believe that we may not have turned over every possibility. We have had some changes in the last five years due to enrollment. We have decreased enrollment considerably at Placentino right now. We're seeing trends upcoming. So I'm not convinced that, and I wasn't in the room, I've watched some of those meetings. Certainly Dr. Slaney and Mr. Karmen aren't in the room, who were the most impacted by these decisions. And I'm not convinced that we have overturned every possibility logistically because I do think some of the parameters have changed and I believe the educators and the leaders in this district could come up with a solution that is better than maybe any of the solutions that have been discussed here. So I hope you reconsider before you do vote and maybe there are some other options that weren't explored. I'm very concerned with the options that have been proposed, whether this one or some of the others that I've heard about.
Was there discussion among the administrators in like the six weeks that the meetings were going? I mean, there was a representative, but I know the teachers took the time to do a survey and then the representatives expressed the results of that. But did the administrators collaborate?
So the administrators and I have talked and all of us have talked and they do believe there are some other options that may not have been discussed.
During this process, there were four different meetings. I mean, we brought in the committee, 14 different people over eight hours, four different meetings. I'm just wondering.
I guess I'll let them. Do you feel like your voices were heard during this process, Dr. Slaney and Mr. Karm?
Well, to put this, we put this committee together, we had, we did have a conversation about having another, another voice there. And I think it was agreed upon by, by everyone that Dr. Jordan, having just left the role of principal and having the connections with, with the, with the other principals that, that he does, was there and was sort of a representative of them.
I, I, I don't want to speak for the principals. All I can say is that they have discussed some other ideas recently that they're willing to explore further that I don't think were entertained in those conversations.
The one thing I just want to, the recommendation is the final recommendation the committee put forward, but I remember in those eight hours where we talked about, I think, every scenario and back and forth on a bunch of them. I do know a couple of them are still, I'd say viable, but there were a lot that were excluded because of constraints that we had.
Specifically what? What were some of the constraints?
Well, it's mainly, we, we talked extensively over a number of the meetings about having high school and middle school together, or high school and Miller together and the different age groups. You know, that was, you know, I know in the recommendation it wasn't called out, but that was a topic of conversation, like what we would do in that situation. Ultimately, we said, and may not be the right decision, but we can separate them and it'll be fine, was kind of how we left it. That consideration around sports with the high school. If the high school can't start earlier, well, they can only start later. If they start later, what does that look like for sports that need to get out? Starting the elementary schools together, there's logistical challenges there. We walked through, it was only four schools, so there's only so many permutations, but I think through that process, we've talked through all of them. And there were some that were just like off the table, like we can't start the high school at 9:00 AM. Flat out, flat out.
What were some of the logistical challenges of starting Placentino and Miller together?
Me, around getting the parent. Like the buses and teachers are fine. I think we squared that away. I don't think that was a concern. It was more around parents than drop off because it's the same campus. So I think we had an initial plan there. I don't know if it was ever talked with Chief Cassidy about, but there was concerns around safety and where cars would be dropping off and picking up. And then also was mentioned that the teachers, and I don't know if it was ever confirmed, the cafeteria can't hold both schools at the same time.
All right, let's just, let's just take it back here for a second because for five years, the committee has been hearing that Placentino and Miller cannot go together. So let's just, let's just talk, because I think.
Well, that's what we're saying. I'm, I'm saying.
Yeah, but I think there were some convergations. I'm not sure if they were, if they're having that, your committee or if it was just coming from what I had about finding ways and with the fact that we have an additional 15 minutes. So now there is the potential, but there's still a lot of potential of putting them together, but we have a lot of work to be done. And I don't know, because the issue there would be, obviously, that would more than likely be that those two schools would start first, correct?
Ideally, yes.
So then you'd have the high school and Rams starting second, and so there's the impact on, on sports.
And jobs, I think.
Sports and activities and jobs and everything.
Permutation, we didn't look at it. Dr. Jordan, I believe, what if the high school went first with Rams?
I would say one of the, one of the scenarios was presented in the, in the, with the School Bus Start Times Committee, along with the Miller and the high school and then the Placentino and Rams. We did the alternative to as far as high school and Placentino together as the, as the first run and then Miller and Rams as the second run. That was discussed, I think, to your point, as far as some of the earlier time, you know, combining the elementary schools, you know, that's, that's one that would prob, that would need to be deeply involved, the Placentino and Miller principals and administration and, and this committee at looking at what it would take to do that type of work to get to that point. But we did look at the, you know, a viable option as far as being the high school Placentino at the earlier time, but also like, okay, what would it, what would it take to get the, the elementary schools together? Because that seemed to be an area that there was interest within that committee.
Do we know, have we talked to the VLD Director about when, what the latest end time of the high school could be that would not have a, you know, significant impact on after-school activities and, and sports, especially freshman and JV sports?
I, I did get some information from, from Matt on what the impacts could be. And he went through and he did season by season, sport by sport. And I'm not going to read everyone just because they've been here for quite a while. The, the gist of it is that, you know, the, the, for sub-varsity sports, the expectation is there'd be less events because of either us not being able to get to districts that may not have lights on their baseball field in time, you know, things of that nature, or just not the availability of, of districts to get to us on time and the lack of lighting here. We have, we do have three illuminated fields with the, the big baseball diamond at Adams, the small diamond at the softball diamond at Damagella and obviously Canadian. But again, that doesn't cover every sport. It's not, you know, again, we're not going to play till midnight. So from that, you know, there, there will be reductions in the amount of events for, for sub-varsity sports. For varsity sports, I mean, the gist of it is that some things will be either later, you know, obviously that practices especially will occur later. He broke one thing down, for example, in the, in the spring where, you know, currently kind of track goes, tracks on the, on the turf or, on the turf area from 3:00 to 4:30, girls is from, girls across 4:30 to 6:30, boys across the 6:30 to 8:30. Well, again, you start sliding that back every time you're getting now practices that may be running till 9 o'clock at night or 9:30 at night on a school night. So those are the types of things that, again, are the challenges with shifting the high school back, you know? I mean, even if we start the high school the same time, it's going to get shifted back by 15 minutes. So that's in there, that's baked in as, as a thing. So if we go back any further, saying we start the high school at 8:20 or 8:30, now you're picking up additional time. The athletic events, again, certain ones are usually on a turf field anyway, and every team in the Tri Valley now, I believe, has lighting. So that's less impactful there. But again, you're still talking about practice is going to happen at a certain time and certain sports do have three, you know, they do our freshman JV and varsity, so that will push again. It's all about lateness now. What's going to happen is that these events will get pushed later. But the sub-varsity ones, that'll be, will be a major impact with regards to them being able to have matches or games.
So our, our later schools in the Tri Valley, Medfield's got the proposed, proposed vote. I think it's actually, it might be tonight or, as far as the 3:10 end time for the high school. Bellingham is 3:15, Dover Shoburn is 3:10. Then you get to like Westwood, 2:55. Then you get to like Westwood, 2:55, Norwood, 2:50, and then it drops to Ashland, 2:45, and then drops from there.
And if the high school started at 8:40, what would the end time be?
I mean, I can pull my, go ahead and take a look.
45 minutes later than it is now.
35, wait, wait, what time did you say?
30 minutes plus the 15.
8:40.
Oh, 8:40, okay, I have that. So yeah, so it'd be 45, 2:43, so 3:18.
3:28, yeah.
Right, sorry. No, we, 3:30 means the latest by 15 minutes.
Yeah, I, I guess my concern with that is also the lost instructional time. So for sports that have like over 100 kids, like our spring track program, they were dismissed early seven times last spring. So then they're being dismissed even, you know, a good 45 or out 60 minutes earlier times 100 kids for each of those events. So there is, there is an impact I think that we have to weigh with decreased instructional time, right? And that is because those events, you're traveling for them, you're, you know, connected to those other tri valleys, they run them, you know, whether they're running them at Reggie Lewis or they're running them in Boston. And if they start at 4:00, then, you know, if your school gets out at 3:30 and the bus is leaving here at 1:30, that's a lot, we have a loss of instructional time.
It's also the sports too, that we don't control the, the playing venues like hockey and swimming and things of that nature. We have our times that we get assigned, which we don't have yet. And obviously if we get, typically a good time, which would be earlier in the day, may now become a conflict.
You also, just to put it out there too, it's not just the sports, it's, we have things going on like the musical and set builds and all of that, just because they're already here until 8, 9, 10 o'clock at night, especially this time right before. So now you're probably talking about an extra hour, hour and a half sometimes, just in terms of getting it all set up and moving, just with that, as the time gets later and later.
And I respect that the committee was mindful about this component, the component of after school jobs for some students. And we received a lot of letters through the school start time. We kind of jumped on right after that vote in the spring of 2019, although we did re-vote it again and we had a community forum. But one of the letters that has always stood out was talking about a student that really needed this after school job and the impact it would have on them, right? So I do think that's something we have to be mindful of. They may not have that job if we push time back. But if they're going to stay working again at the Placentino and Miller at the same time, what does that mean logistically for running those buses through that campus and running, you know, drop off lines, pickup lines? What does that look like?
Who wants to speak to that?
I mean, again, we have to prioritize getting buses and staff in.
Right.
That has to be a priority. You know, we've, we've had discussions about ideas on what to do with parents' drop off and pickup. You know, it's, it's something we're still talking through.
Yeah, I think the biggest change that we haven't had an opportunity to discuss in the past, because we have the enrollment bubble of the 220 kindergarteners going in and now in third grade, and we've been shifting staff up as a result of that, we're at 139 kindergarteners this year. So we had not, when we were talking about logistics in the past, we were looking at a lot more cars on campus as well. And then the potential of, there's always the potential of when you're, if you combined those schools, that you would then have the same amount of cars, or less cars, because you know, they're driving their kids at the same time. So it's not, it's not double the cars and that's not, because you might have kids in Placentino and Miller now going at the same time. So there's less cars that way as well.
You know, not that I want to put the cart before the horse on any of this, but you know, I would want to, to answer your question, I'd want to lean on Dr. Slaney as far as what we've done there and some of the past experiences we learned even at the middle schools as far as like how we brought cars onto campus during COVID as well. And that said, you know, having more, if, if that's something we're pursuing and looking at as far as the feasibility of it, you know, we would need a Plan A, Plan B, Plan C as we go into the start of the year. But that's, that is how we pivoted during COVID is we, the first, I think I was talking to Mr. Kine, I was calling Dr. Kine, it's the new haircut.
Yeah, that's right.
About, you know, with a big shift like that, it's, it's going to be rocky for a couple, a couple of weeks and, and trying to, trying to navigate that as best we can.
So, so Dr. Slaney and Mr. Kine, so we have had some conversations about looking at this now, right? So you want, do you want to talk about sort of what, what the thought would be potentially about being able to combine the start times for your two schools?
I mean, I think they can talk in generalisms. One of the things that they can speak to is that in the past, this, this extra 15 minutes on the day, also, you know, we had inflexibility with our, we share unified art staff at both buildings. And with this extra time change, it wouldn't necessarily mean adding staff, whereas that was a concern before, fitting all our in and maybe having add staff and things like that too, so.
Yeah, Mr. Alfred, I, I hear you. When you said for the past five years, we've been saying we, we, you know, five years ago.
This is where just friends sort of started talking about.
Is it important to say it publicly? Like we said, no, this can't happen. There have been variables that were game changers, that there's a possibility. And, you know, part of it was our unified art schedule, that we wouldn't have been able to fit them in because of our, our two times. With the added 15 minutes to the day.
Inaction.
We're able to do it. We are able to fit that in. Additionally, because of decreasing enrollment and looking at the census and going forward, it doesn't look like we're going to be going back up anytime soon. Reducing by 100 kids is a lot. I talked to Mr. Bude in the beginning of the year when I did dismissal for the first time, I was like, what just happened? There, like it happened so quickly. Also, before the pandemic, we did dismissal very differently. We learned a lot of efficiencies of how to use technology to be able to get parents through without them getting out of their cars, which we didn't do before. Before they parked their cars, they came into the cafeteria, they got their kids, they left. The thought of having both Miller and Placentino do that at the same time with that system, no, that wouldn't be feasible. But with our new efficiencies of how we do it, we are. You know, I, I lean heavily on Mr. Bude and his knowledge of this. And I think that we now can think about, as Dr. Jordan said, some of the things that we learned from the pandemic of not being so linear and how we think about moving our cars through the campus, of having them use the same entrance off of Woodland Street, of the possibility of going in through a different route and then still making sure that we're following the, the fire lanes and that piece. We think there's lots of work to be done. Dr. Jordan and Mr. Bude, you know, posed to us, what are the challenges of this? And we went together and looked at the challenges and we think that there's solutions. We would want to work with Mr. Bude and Dr. Jordan as a team to go through. I do know on the committee, there were things that were mentioned, like that the cafeteria wouldn't work. All due respect, we do know schedules, you know, we can run our lunches, we can do that.
And I agree, we've got, we've got to focus on the buses, the teachers being able to get out. Parents are going to maybe have to have a little bit of patience coming in. But the new system since COVID that we both have in place really works and it really works well, that we can get cars in and out of there. I think you then wouldn't have the bridge program between Miller and Placentino, which is about 90 minutes that parents have to pay for while their kids are waiting for the Placentino students to get out. If, you know, if we ended up early, we might not even need the early morning extended day because we're already there. And so that, we're just loading them into the school and getting kids ready for the breakfast program.
We'd, we'd love the opportunity to do a full kind of presentation for you with us working with Mr. Bude and, and Dr. Jordan, to be able to take, you know, all of your questions and thoughts and be able to present it so that you're able to make a decision in this.
And I think no matter what direction, obviously, what ultimately the school committee decides, as administrators, we just, we look for what is the best decision based on the limitations we have, right? And I think school safety is a huge concern, you know, just where more students get, older students get pushed off buses if we go with this scenario that we described tonight. I think there's just so many layers to that, that I don't think anything that we could come up with, no matter how diligent Dr. Slaney and Mr. Kine are, there certainly would be limitations to any model we put forward. But I think coming down to what's the best model, what's the limitation that we can do for our kids and for our communities really will be.
I also want you to think about what Dr. Slaney said at the very beginning, you know, those five-year-olds with middle schoolers or our 10-year-olds with 19-year-olds, you know, it is about the safety of our kids. And not to say anything, anybody's going to try and be malicious, but at the same time, we, it makes us nervous.
Can I ask, when you're talking about this, like how do we break up and put kids on buses, is it, is it having gaps between like a younger age group with a much older age group? Or is it just middle school children who are tough to put with anyone? Is that what you're saying?
No, I, I don't think, I don't think that's. I think he's telling me the gaps is concerning.
Is Miller and Rams together objectionable, I guess, is really my.
It would be less objectionable as far as the age.
Probably, but I don't think they would have the Placentino students riding with the high school kids because they would be separate.
Right, but Miller and Rams, would that be okay?
You could put Placentino and the high school at the same start time, but they'd be separate.
Right. Have we talked to Chief Cassidy about any changes in access road?
So we already know that we cannot use the, behind, but right now, like, and this is where, I mean, I, we don't want, we didn't want them to go too far into this because we don't know if you're even going to let us move in this direction to consider it. But right now, the preschool population goes through that back through the Woodland campus, I mean, through the Rams campus and that road by the preschool playground. So that might be.
The access road that goes between the Derryville Field.
So do we run that by Chief Cassidy?
Yes, I did.
This is significantly.
And then he is.
He would not, he would want more signage there with regards to no parking signs and things of that nature because he struggles already with people parking on there during athletic events at the high school, baseball games and softball games. But again.
Whereas he was opposed to the other plan, he's amenable.
Not unopposed. It can be, we've already, I think the difference is when, if we had a fire situation coming around the back of the building, there was nowhere for all of these cars to go to get out of the way. In this short distance, they could get out of the way. I think that's really why he feels that they would be able to manage that.
I should sort of think if it comes down to signs, we shouldn't let signs start. Stop. A good decision.
I hate signs.
We're talking about.
Do you envision rolling drop off pickup or are you only envisioning something where parents have to park and go?
No parking.
No, no drop off.
We could not have them parked.
What would they do for drop off? Would it be different than pickup?
I think we've got to, we've got to get down into the nitty gritty with it. If you want us to get down into it, we will, we're just not there yet. We've got ideas.
You're getting some, some thinking. And as you said to Mr. List, you know, 1-1. Same deadline, different problem.
We have a lot, listen, we have a lot of ideas. Dave and I have two different ideas of how, like, of how pickup or drop off could occur. They're both feasible. What we would like to do next is meet with Mr. Bude, meet with Dr. Jordan, bring in Chief Cassidy, bring in Officer Woods, talk it all through, be able to do a presentation for you.
To have a school committee representative as part of that too? Is that something people are open to?
I, to full purpose?
Because we may have a lot, we may have questions that the committee would have. Before, I mean, I guess timing is the issue. It's really not January 1st. I think our last day of school is December 20th. So we, we are now up against a wall with, you know, about four and a half weeks and, you know, a good part of that is also, we have very limited time.
We would be able to do a presentation for the next school committee meeting.
Okay.
Would you be able to do a presentation by December 5th?
Yeah.
That's not the next, we just.
We may not get the information to you a week ahead of time, but we'd be able to present on December 5th.
I think because it's so important to this leadership team to try to find the best solution possible, that they're willing to take.
And appreciate that, but I will say, the community will hear a presentation on December 5th and then what would it be our intention that we would have to vote by December 12th? Are we also opening ourselves up to a meeting on the 19th as well? Are we giving the community one week or two weeks after they hear the presentation to give feedback? My concern is just, you know, the committee met for several weeks, this memo was put together and then we've heard feedback tonight. We probably will then have feedback from the community that might, we might need to absorb and respond to with just, more than just one week.
I think we'll, so mention, go ahead. I think we'll, I mean, let's talk about the option they're going to explore so the community can digest it starting tonight.
Can we hear some of the ideas for pickup and drop off then?
Before we get into that though, I do, I do, I don't, I want to hear that. I think that there, one we haven't done yet, which I think is important, is to communicate some of this to the committee in some form. Because there is sort of a dearth of information in a vacuum, information is sort of plugged in regardless. So I guess what are the, is there consensus that while we respect the work of the committee, the subcommittee, we do not, are we comfortable just sort of saying that given the sort of the feedback we've heard from, from the principals that, that probably just, well, it may work in some sort of theory as they were trying to work within some of the parameters that they had, in reality, just is not a.
I'm not ready to toss what the committee or 14 put together over multiple meetings as representatives of teachers, of representatives of parents, as representatives of administration. I'm not ready to completely toss that out without hearing something viable and being able to ask the questions and make sure we have feedback from the community. And I don't know that a week's feedback is, is that fair, but.
Speaking from the non-dissolved committee, as one individual on it and on the school committee, I think we, and Dr. Jordan, Mr. Bude, Cynthia and Joe also part of it, we were not married to the groupings. We felt a need to provide the groupings. I think it's more important we look at the recommend, the other recommendations to make sure whatever subsequent recommendation in terms of groupings, we stick somewhat within that. And I think what was being discussed right now mostly falls within that, if not entirely, except for the fact that it goes against the groupings that were provided. I think we, we chat actually groupings the least more around the confines of what, you know, we can start at and end at, as an example. So I, I don't think it's exactly throwing it away, but I think.
I think it still provides a framework that you're trying to meet. And I, I do think you guys spoke to many of the concerns that, but you were kind of coming up with the best case scenario, working with the information you had. But if you can put up a better plan, I would love to see it.
And then can I, can I request that the athletic director and maybe some representatives from, from the arts and other, other high school programs, at least be consulted and be involved in sort of as, because as you work on the elementary school piece, there's a whole, it's sort of like, you can still, that can still be a piece, but it can be the elementary schools going first, the elementary schools going second, and then there's.
Is there any appetite for trying to have this meeting on the 21st next week?
Can I just, I just wanted to go back to one thing you were saying though, Dan, is that the, the impact to the arts or athletics is going to be felt in both secondary schools. So if they're together, you know, it, it's a question of whether they would be, whether the school committee would entertain doing them as the first run versus the second. The, the question, the question is again, going back to structure, is, is the structure of this putting the two elementaries together and the two secondaries together?
Right. Well, I mean, the.
Do you know what I'm saying?
No, I do. And the, I, I think that, you know, I don't want to ignore the fact that the, the most pushback I've heard at the committee meetings was from Miller teachers, you know, that had significant concerns about moving Miller later.
And I think that that could be a potential that you would put, if there were this move forward, that the two elementary schools could be the first because we also have tons of research to show that our younger children should be going earlier because they go to bed much earlier and the sleep patterns and similarly with our older students, it's all, I mean, that is the reason, even though that predates me and I arrived with this change that we were implementing at that time. It, my understanding was it was specifically because we wanted our older students to go later.
Correct. I think in that situation though, if we're, in my view, I think we're, we're dealing with an earliest start time of 7:50. I think that we, we have heard for four plus years from many, many members of the community a strong, a significant concern with the 7:30 start time, especially what that means for pickups for, for a lot of the younger kids. Now the sort of, I would say that if the, if you. Now, the sort of, I would say that if the, if you put the high school first, could you go a little early because these are bigger individuals, you know, these are taller, they have, maybe, you know, they're, they're, they're not little kids waiting up in the bus in the dark. So thought at the same time, then you're going against the sleep work that was done, you know, five years ago. So if you take the 7:30 as the first time, start time, and that gets you to, at best, and I know Keith, you know, 50 minutes is still, is still a tough, tough slog, but at best, an 8:40 start time for the, for the second set of schools, which then would put the high school at a 3:30-ish release time, which would be the latest. So, I mean, these are the trade-offs that we're.
Dan, let me ask you, in the recommendation provided, the high school, we wouldn't move it up, we would stay at 8:10, I believe, give or take 10 minutes. And with Miller, and then Placentino-Rams would go basically 50 minutes later, right? 40, 50 minutes?
So.
So all we're doing is putting Rams.
So nine o'clock start time?
We have a nine o'clock start time in this recommendation.
Well, I understand, but so at a nine o'clock start time, your, start time, what is the end time for Placentino?
3:45.
3:40, isn't it? No, because they're.
4:45, 10 minutes.
One of the things we also talked about was moving, you know, it was during the override, was, you know, moving the, the end time of Placentino up. And now I think that we've heard less concerns about that, but if you had a 3:45, 3:40, 3:45 end time, you will have kids getting off the bus at 4:30.
But Dan, the current.
Or later.
Or later.
The current recommendation has that.
What's that?
The current recommendation has that.
Has what?
Placentino on the second run, they would go later.
There's no, no, I understand it does that, but what, like, what points I'm talking about, the downsides. And the, yeah, and the reasons you're concerned is you're gonna have our smallest, you know, students getting off the bus at 4:30 when it's pitch black dark in the, in the middle of winter, which has been the concern of a lot of parents about pickups.
I think that's the issue. 7:30, it's dark, and 4:30, it's dark. You know, I mean.
It depends if the climate change is gonna change that.
Dr. Jordan and Mr. Bude, in terms of the bus time, is it, if you had Placentino and Miller together, would you expect that would take 50 minutes or would you expect it to take longer than the middle school, high school run?
Probably looking at an hour.
Go ahead. I'm just, I'm pausing, just going, I'm just, I'm trying to put together that, I wasn't ready for that question. I mean, 50 minutes would probably be the best that we could look at, because the problem is not the early run, you know, it's the morning one. The problem for the 50 minutes is the later run, because it's, the, the challenge is, is that you, that the start of school and you push for the breakfast and you're actually gonna be a little early so you get that run started. But at the end of the day, you dismiss and you go, and then you gotta try to get back for your next dismissal. And if, if Placentino-Miller is the second run, that's gonna require us to have staff stay around later. And we've already extended the teacher's day to the very end of the day already. So, you know, they may not be participating. If the high school, middle school is the second run of the day, and the buses were showing up five minutes later than the dismissal time, that's something that I think is much more manageable, just because of the age of the children and, you know, the developmental level of them. And then don't we screw them out anyway, even if they have a bus? So they find their own ways home. So it's, it's, you know, I, if we try to squeeze the times, I think it really behooves us to make sure that, my recommendation would be that the element, if we're putting the elementarys together, the secondaries together, that the elementarys are first. Just because if, if we're wrong on this, if, you know, if I say 50 minutes and it's really 57, at the elementary, it's a big impact.
I also would say that, you know, if, if we are looking to squeeze the time, I mean, we projected this at 55 minutes just to account for the issues we had beginning of the year with, with buses. Do we think maybe through conversation of some different constraints or things we can put into place to kind of pinch that a little bit? Sure. That wasn't, you know, as Frank knows, we were very, Keith and I were very open that that wasn't the purview of that group, just because that might involve school committee decision on policy, on transportation, potential, you know, things that might need to happen within the community. So that was what made its way into the recommendation, is just that, that the school committee consider those factors so that we can pinch that time a little bit.
Okay. So my question is actually more, and I think, I think this is along the lines, similar in the last four years, talking about the different bus runs, the Placentino run tends to take longer, which as parents we probably don't understand, getting our kindergarten into the primary, super grade, it just takes longer, right? They drop stuff, they're not paying attention, we wait for them to sit down, all of those things, versus like in middle school or high school. So I'm just trying to get an assessment, your assessment, based on your experience of how long each of those runs takes.
Again, what I'd say, though, is that I go back to my previous statement, that if we're trying to pinch time, having the elementarys go first, because, again, the shorter run would potentially be the, the second run in the morning, because I'm picking up high school, middle schoolers.
So high school and middle school run would take less time than Placentino and Miller?
I'd say yes. Because again, kids, well, no.
On the high school, no?
No, no. The numbers are, the numbers are, are two small schools, our high school and Placentino, our two large schools are, are Miller and Miller. Miller and Miller. So it's about equal number of kids on the buses. The, the, the children go on the bus faster. They just do. And so, the, the, in the mornings, the runs would be, again, we'd have a better chance of trying to do a little pinching at the mornings. The afternoons, again, the kids in the afternoon, again, if they took longer to get off, I've still, again, if it's a few more minutes, we can afford that time at the back end, at the secondary level more than we can at the elementary level. The students need rest supervision.
I would also, I would also add kind of what I was getting at as far as on the, we, there are a lot of stops involved in the radius at which we run our bus runs. And when we think about the length of time that bus runs are done and things that can make them faster, you know, one is conversation by the school committee for potential policy as far as like, about the number of stops that we, we do do, or what are some of the parameters around that? Also, what is the radius at which bus, bussing does start in the district? And potentially those who are within a certain radius need to potentially walk or find alternative means.
And one of the situations you looked at where you had Placentino and the high school at the same time, but on different buses, you realize some time savings because you were no longer crossing Washington Street. Is that correct?
There's no question that one of the downsides of putting the secondaries together is on, on having children who are on buses cross Washington Street as part of their route. And that there are challenges of getting across Washington Street, you know, and, and, you know, it's something that we've been fighting since we put these buses together in 2002 or '03, so.
So I think we need to consider how we want to get feedback from the community.
How or what?
Both.
I think they're on what, though, Dan, right?
What's that?
On what are they giving feedback on?
Correct.
Yeah.
Because given the time constraints, as the, the, more work is done on this, and just to be clear, you know, a lot of this is sort of, there were those constraints that we had for five years that, as conversations have happened, have loosened up, this was not something that was sort of withheld from the, the subcommittee, it was just that when the subcommittee really started its work and was doing its work, this was not something that was, that it was feasible.
It's the 15 minutes that really is the scheduling piece that allows us to get the unified arts in.
Right. But also within further conversations with Chief Cassidy, and that was also one of the impediments was that we, you know, the, and it's just, just to add that, you know, we still have the whole Woodland Street Bridge thing, that, you know, really needs to be fixed, Mr. Slegro, remember?
Which I also think longer term would help the situation, too, right? That that could tighten up later.
Mr. Sparlson does have an update on it.
Okay, good, good. We'll get that from him in just a minute. But do, so do, what, how do you want to do? You want to have some sort of forum? Do, I mean, I, surveys are tough, I think, for these, everything, especially because we have to kind of somehow convey all of these different issues and then come up with a, with a sort of a set of differences.
When we did a survey, we're just among the 14, so not a science.
I'm super concerned about the timing. We're asking to survey on something that we're still waiting for details on. So is it, are we doing a survey on December 6th or 7th? Could we ask for details by next Thursday and do a survey from like the 22nd? Keep it open 10 days, have feedback by early December?
I don't know. Would you, I don't, would you be able to get something?
I'm just wondering, I know what parents would give feedback on. I mean, from the, the user perspective, they would be driving their car close to the building and dropping their child off, much like they do now. I don't, they don't, like, the feedback on what loop they go in, or what direction they go in, I'm not sure that's a problem for a parent anyways. And I think that what we can commit to in this idea is that they're not gonna be dropped off away from the, the building, that we can have a drop off piece that won't interfere with buses.
I think that some of what I'd like to hear more, more feedback on, I mean, we've, you know, what is, you know, is 7:00, is 7:50 the earliest? Could you go early or 7:50 too early as it, as it is?
Oh.
Not, not from your, your perspective, but from.
I'm out, it's fine.
I'm here. 6:50.
By the way, the research studies do show that our kids are up much earlier.
Yep.
Is, is the drop off for Placentino and Miller at Rams, is that what you're talking about?
No. No. They would be pulling up to our building.
Okay, which part of your building?
The, again, so I would want to vet this more with our two assistant superintendents. That being said, the idea is to come up by Linden Street, know where our preschool drop off is on the side of the building? Have you done that?
Yes. So then exiting out of the Miller-Placentino parking lot.
Then they go straight through, never go into the loop, and they'd be able to go out.
But it's one thing to, to do that at the end of the day without impacting things, because you wait for all the buses to leave and then you send the, the cars onto, onto campus. And you don't impact anything because the buses are already left, so they're moving. In the morning, to get the parents to drop their kids off in time to, to be there on time, but also not be there while the buses are there.
Well, they wouldn't be interfering with the buses. The buses would be in the center loop by the cafeteria and in the Placentino loop. We're assuming that we would have, we'd need both loops. So they would be, those buses would be coming in, the parents would not be coming in through the Woodland entrance, they'd be coming in through the Linden Street entrance. So they would never be coming in the same parts. We wouldn't want them on Woodland Street because they would be clogging up the buses, and we need the buses to be able to come and go. When the buses need to exit, we simply have someone stop traffic and those buses go. We usually unload buses at the same time. The staggered buses would be put in the center loop so they'd be away from the cars anyways, and they'd be exiting from two different exits.
And I think that you could map all this out.
Yep.
I think they're invested in trying to work out this solution.
So if that was the case, then it would be Placentino's time that would change?
Yes.
Most likely, and maybe a shift with slight shift.
Well, we need to, we need to get more from the, the high school on, on impact there and what, what the way, I mean, we're gonna be playing around with the times, but yeah, I mean, I'd, I'd want some sort of, you know, assurance that, that we'd still be able to do what we're doing now and not have a detriment. I mean, we talked, which is sort of the easiest ones to sort of conceptualize, but I think, you know, Mr. Rich brought up a lot of great points about, you know, building sets and the impact on, on the arts and, and just all the different clubs and activities that we do, and then students that are at after school jobs. I also know, I mean, and just to throw one more out there, I know that during the start times debate of 2002, there were some parents who, you know, were concerned because they had high school students who they would use for, for child care and having the students end after the little kids was problematic for them. I don't know how, how much that issue is, but that was definitely something that was raised by more than one parent.
Yeah, I think that's the issue, no matter what time we put, there's a childcare issue if they go early, there's a childcare issue at the end of the day if they go, if the little ones go late, there's a childcare issue at the front of the day. So, and it's still kind of the same issue.
Sure. I would say that I think there was probably less of an issue at the beginning of the day than in sort of the middle of what could be the workday, right?
Extended day probably right now has about 45 to 50 kids that are bridge between Placentino and Miller, because we get out 90 minutes. So parents don't want to come, you know, pick up one and then get the other, so pl- extended day has those kiddos. They probably will not have a large group there, so it will probably hopefully help parents that they won't need to have that care that they need right there in the middle.
I also think there's the beginning of the day. If my five or six-year-old, I don't have one anymore, thank you, but if they started at, you know, 9:05 or that piece, that would interrupt my beginning of the day. I would be looking for childcare at the beginning of the day. I don't know many people who start work after that, where older kids are able to be home by themselves in the beginning of the day.
They probably aren't at the end of the day because it's five o'clock by the time the kid gets home. It's late.
Or get brought back to school, because we are the only school that does not drop off without a parent there. So that's the other piece that you have to consider, that we have our buses come back with kids. So I would have to have staff for a good hour after that piece. And actually, it's longer. I have kids picked up now at 5:00.
I could not do it, I mean, next Thursday. You guys could, could do it also, it sounds like that might be a.
I think they need to talk with Chief Cassidy as well.
Do you want to wait for that to, do?
Do we have to wait till Thursday? Could we do it Wednesday?
We could do it Tuesday.
Sunday, it's Friday.
They could also.
Friday tomorrow, so we don't want to wait Tuesday.
To put together a presentation.
Yeah, I'm talking about in December.
Oh.
Okay. I can probably do that.
The Thanksgiving week is tight, but if you had to do something earlier, you know, Monday or Tuesday of that week.
Dan?
Yes.
Al?
Oh, Cindy, you're still here, okay.
I existed over here, sitting on my hands for the last hour. Allison Curry had a good idea, which was, what about we did a webinar to kind of go over those different ideas as an alternative, to try to do like some big forum for people to kind of have to come out to? And that could be recorded and disseminate votes, that helps. So that was a good idea.
It's not a bad one. You could do a Q and A with, with a Zoom.
Yeah, it's hard to do an open-ended webinar, but you could do a Q and A kind of thing, where we've done those before and people try to submit questions ahead of time and/or we take. Okay?
We need to get a presentation together, so there's a point of reference.
Right, yes. They would walk through whatever their presentation would be.
We've done that during, we did that a lot during the webinar setup, during, you'd have a facilitator, you'd have a presenter and a facilitator that brought the questions to the, to the group and whoever's there. I mean, we, all the principals have a lot of experience with that.
I guess you're suggesting instead of Thursday, December 5th, looking at Monday, November 25th, or Tuesday, November 26th for that meeting, to give more time?
I mean, because we'd want to do the, the Q and A webinar after that, right?
Right.
So that would then become the sort of the first week of December, after we disseminated something and.
And then it would rush and go a week later on December 12th, or come back again on December 19th.
And so trying to get the attention of everybody over Thanksgiving, yep.
I like the 26th.
Let's just, let's.
We could also send out the recording, you know, to the, to the audience.
Again, you see the four principals that are here and, and speed that, I think this.
I mean, I'd like to do, I think, I, I think doing some sort of Q and A rather than just a, because we have this that everyone can, can watch if they're really wanting for punishment, but since they would rather have the, have Q and A from, from the public and somehow respond to it, I don't know, is it limited to pre? Let's, let's try to figure out, we can, we can figure that.
You'd be a moderator.
Yeah, that's what I'm seeing in the chat.
Might not necessarily be.
I think people might need options ahead of time, so that they know what they're asking questions about.
Right. We should share the presentation down, sort of some synopsis.
Or like, you know, like, here's, here's an option, here's an option, here are the thoughts, and then.
Yeah. It's such as options. Yeah, usually then it's not just options, right? Because if you just throw out options, people...
It's a buffet, I want this in there.
But you need to describe what the items on the buffet are in pretty big detail and what's the potential, you know, because you're talking, you're really talking about there are four times to each, to each thing that's important, right? It's the first pickup, the first bus pickup time, the start time, the end time, and the last, the last, you know, bus drop-off time.
But one of the things I don't think we're going to have for you yet, but we will talk about it with Chief Cassidy, is a plan for that drop-off and that pickup, that exact specific plan for those things, because we know we can get those done, but we could have the times and the schedules and the things like that.
No, we need those, as long as you're confident you're going to get it, we can figure that out by...
Just make sure you're not literally that.
I think I may be to know that we can use that route, right? Because if you came back and told me, oh, we only have forty spots at Rams for people to park, and parents with their kindergarten, second grader in tow on a rainy, snowy day have to park at Rams, wrap these kids over, or that we're dropping them on Rams...
You want to be feasible.
Easily feasible.
You don't need to know where or the details of it, you need to know that they can come towards the bag.
And then all the parties...
That's the situation, then I need to know what I'm voting on.
I think we need to go, okay, we need the signs, the signs don't need to be up right now.
But my point is, we also, I want to understand the impact of, if we were to look at doing the high school second, what the impact of a three thirty end time is, of a three twenty end time, and then you can work backwards from there, so that then when we do talk to the community and we say, look, if we do three thirty, this impacts X, Y, and Z, and have these negative impacts, however, with the start time of the Miller Placentino is Y, but if we move the high school up, you know, so that we, because I don't, you know, it's not to say that the only issue is the first pickup, but the start time of Miller and then Placentino, if you ran them together, that's what we've been hearing, because that's where the problem has been, right? Because that's where the other schools have been, have been okay with that. But as soon as we start moving things around, the other problems are going to probably...
Right.
So we just need to sort of flesh out every single thing, and the impact on instructional time, those some of that, I think also, you know, well, yeah, I think that it's all sort of interconnected, and so, all right, so what are people's, so the twelve-sixth, we would be looking at a presentation, what are we talking about? How do people feel about that? But this is a Tuesday before Thanksgiving.
...
What's that?
Four.
Yeah, no, it shouldn't be that day.
We're going to stick to this topic on the end of our agenda.
Hey, one of our principals, do you feel like you can get this together? I mean, I think if we're going to be recording it, potentially sending it out to the right hour for people to review and have another opportunity for feedback after that.
No, this would, this would be recorded, it would be a public meeting and everything. This would not be the Q and A.
That's a station, that's okay, we can do the feedback after.
And the feedback would be after that. Much fewer objections to it.
Other than it's Thanksgiving week.
Other than it's Thanksgiving week.
That Monday looks a lot better than a Tuesday.
So, Dan, are you saying that you want to have a meeting on Tuesday, the twenty-sixth?
Want is a very strong word.
Yes, we're talking...
You're talking about a meeting on the twenty-sixth, yes.
Okay.
It sounds like we have a couple more we cannot do Monday, so...
I can't, I'll be on the plane.
Can we move forward with Tuesday?
I can't do Monday.
Okay, Tuesday it is.
Okay, and just for the community, we are trying to fit all this in before the end of the year, we're not trying to bury something on the week of Thanksgiving. So, yeah, I think that I would be formidable to starting it earlier.
Four thirty?
I would do it earlier, it's fine. New? I believe school is still in session, so...
Yeah, we just have, we have a principal that has a...
That's a four thirty, right? Four fifteen to five?
I have a meeting for superintendent, Eva, right before, from four fifteen to five thirty.
So you're on that date. So, five thirty?
Five thirty.
Okay, we look for that, and then leave the fifth open as well?
And the twelfth.
And then the twelfth, and lightly pencil in the nineteenth.
Can we just take off January?
No.
That's what Monday's usually going. Okay, we do this to ourselves. All right, so I think we have a, we have a plan in action. Anything else about this?
I guess though it would be helpful to the principals, sorry, before, if there are complications in what we're talking about, if there are complications in what we talked about today for the plan on the twenty-sixth, just share that so that we don't need to find that out, that would be helpful.
Keith.
Keith will let us know. Thank you, Keith.
If you'd like to start, take off.
All right. Believe it or not, we actually still have a schedule. All right, thank you all. All right, I would like to now invite our senior colleague from the Select Board up to, he can give us an update as of the...
It's like Monday, if everybody leaves.
And then also discuss, do you, are you going to create a policy advisory committee?
We did.
We'll do it briefly.
Yeah, I'm Ben Sparrow, I'm from the Select Board Vice Chair. I won't, I mean, I can read my statement that I have about school start times. I mean, my, my position is a little different, because, I mean, I have a kind of owner, so I have, I have stake in this, but it's not quite the same kind of a conversation that you have. So I'll just start with that first, real quickly. And, you know, the first thing I want to do is just say thank you for inviting me to be part of the process and to participate. I think it's important that we collaborate across these, across our boards and things like that. So with that in mind, the Select Board is interested in partnering with the school committee to ensure our kids have safe and effective transportation to school. With the upcoming movement on Woodland Street project, we put it out to bid on Monday, we have fifteen interested parties, so that's good, there's not, we don't have any bids yet, but we're moving forward on that. Some challenges will disappear before the start of the next school year, while others may linger and develop. The Mass dot Safe Routes to Schools program has numerous resources and staff available to assist HPS in these areas, and some suggestions would be updating arrival and dismissal practices to promote walking and biking, adding policies that promote walking and biking, providing pedestrian bicycle safety training to students. The town has been working, we've been trying to work together with things like the override, and I think this is another opportunity for our boards to collaborate. We're committed to strategy that includes these kinds of programs like Safe Routes to Schools and Complete Streets, ensures that kids have multiple means of reaching schools beyond just buses and cars. Further, the town has a plan for sidewalk construction that started new ways on Norfolk and Central Street. I've actually had talked to parents personally who've asked me about that on Central Street, and that provides greater access to the Woodland Street campus. Just recently, the Holliston DPW has prioritized sidewalk and crosswalk improvements for the benefit of HPS students, including widening repaired sidewalk in front of the Adams Middle School, repaired sidewalks and improved crosswalk along Central between Blair Square and Franklin Street, pedestrian crossing signals and improved crosswalks at several locations downtown along Washington Street. And FY twenty-five, we plan to improve rail trail access and crosswalks at Casey's to allow for winter access, plans to add repaired sidewalks along Church Street between Railroad and Central Streets. And with the debt exclusion for Norfolk, Central, and Groving, these projects will allow new sidewalks within the one-mile radius of the Woodland Street campus, connecting dense residential neighborhoods to safe routes to school. And finally, also, we have Blair Square, there's, it's a beautiful gathering point for kids to start, they do the walking school bus from places like that. We recognize that many parents need to drive their children to school, and the goal is to offer alternatives such as the walking school bus. Shifting transportation modes to encourage greater number of students who walk, bike, and ride the bus may have benefits. Walking and biking are excellent ways to promote health, well-being, and connect to the natural environment. Busing, combined with walking and biking, reduces congestion on local roads and reduces greenhouse gas emissions by removing passenger vehicles from school traffic, and these goals align with many objectives of the town and Holliston Public School strategic plan. We're looking also to try to find opportunities to eliminate reliance on adults for transportation to school and positively impact attendance. Walking is no cost form of transportation, and biking can be as well, through programs that promote helmets and bicycles. These goals align, again, also align with the strategic plan. So the Select Board, we're asking you, the school committee, for any recommendation around busing, to include comments to the Select Board on projects or ideas for how municipal resources can support the schools with reducing traffic and developing alternatives to motor vehicles for children to get to school, promoting good health in our community. And then also, working with the school committee long-term to discuss strategic planning for transportation. And I think at some point, I know you're busy, I'm not trying to say you're not, but finding a way to schedule some kind of opportunities formally or informally between our boards to have these kinds of discussions, whether it's the chairs, whether it's subset, whatever it happens to be, but I think there's opportunities there. Because I think our, our goals align, and I think we need to be working together. I mean, you know, we're dealing with a lot of infrastructure projects, we've got a lot of things in the pipeline, and I think it's important that our goals and your goals coincide when it comes to these kinds of projects. And that's it with that. Any questions?
Thank you, Ben. And I, and I did note within the recommendations of the committee, they talked about encouraging us to engage with you, the Select Board, for traffic assistance.
I was self-dealing, because I actually put...
No, I did take note about the part with the traffic assistance and police or traffic guides, because I do think one of the ongoing issues, especially as we look at this, and if we have, if we do go with a plan that runs, that's running those buses across Washington Street again, is getting them over and maybe having the police officer assistance and stopping traffic on sixteen to move our buses across there, right? Because it's certainly a time loss on both routes. So is that something we can continue to engage you with and have discussions about?
Well, I mean, I'd be cautious about doing that from my perspective, because I do not personally philosophically believe in talking about operations of an individual of a department that's under my purview. I mean, I don't feel it's appropriate, that would be really a conversation to have with the chief. I mean, I certainly can talk to him and things like that, but I just want to be careful about prescribing how they should interact with those kinds of things. But we certainly can have those kinds of conversations, and, you know, I would like everything on the table to have these conversations. It doesn't mean they're going to come to fruition, it doesn't mean they're feasible in any respect, but it also means that surely we can have the conversation.
We'll need your help facilitating the conversation.
Sure.
I really like two school resource officers, right? We're not usually posting a police officer outside for, you know, two hours in the morning to direct traffic.
Yeah, you know, we can, we can work on that to see what kinds of, what kinds of things that can be done, if that's, if that's feasible, and certainly I can help with facilitating that conversation.
And actually, the bigger time is actually the afternoon, because that's when all buses...
I said morning.
No, no, what you're saying, it's all buses go in the afternoon, in the morning, some are in different directions, and it would also be the second run of the day, so, or the second run of the morning, excuse me. So, you know, again, they might be parking.
Ever been caught in the traffic going past the Hawkinson schools, when they're releasing? You see that, there's an officer out there holding traffic to move their buses out of that facility. I'm just...
Yeah, we can explore some of those. I think it's a little tricky, because we're talking about trying to have a resource that's not, I mean, Hawkinson has them like there, you know, within the, within their campus, and they have, it's able to be there, whereas, and that's that main road there on eighty-five, but here we have a little bit of removal between where the schools are and where the need is on Route sixteen. So we have to figure out if that's something that's even feasible to accomplish.
And then just briefly on the Policy Advisory Committee.
Sure.
I know we've done a request to...
Yes.
Provide some representatives?
Yeah, we, we approved the creation based on the strategic plan of a DEI advisory committee, and it's intended to be a resource to help look at the equitability and of policies and things like that within the town of Holliston. It seems to be lacking at this time, because there was a lot of desire for that movement. And the way we've looked at making up who is on that committee is based on several committees providing nominees for those positions, and we had set aside two for the schools. The intention is not necessarily that it's you folks, it's, it could certainly be someone else, like for example, Stacy Raffey is your envisioning future Holliston representative, and she's no longer on the school committee. So I think it's, you know, it's not, it's not unreasonable to think, and it's, we don't really know how much work it would be, but at the same time, you certainly have plenty of work to do. So I would say it would probably be somebody, a representative, that you would provide. One of the things we explored is trying to compile potential nominees for this particular, for this particular group, looking towards having a diverse makeup of the, of the committee, not necessarily want a homogenous committee. We want to be able to find people from different parts of the community who may be, who may be underrepresented, or potentially who have a better perspective than, you know, myself as a white male, I have very little to offer in this sense, because, because of the experiences that I've had. So therefore, you know, looking to compile a group of people, so there would certainly be, you know, talking within, within all the committees of the, these are the people who've expressed interest in participating in this committee. And I hope that you would participate and be a part of it, because I think having everybody from all sorts of sectors, we have council on aging, we're putting youth and family services, I think that's what we're still calling them, and certainly a couple from the Select Board and one from the Town Administrator's Office, hopefully with somebody with some legal experience in this, in this space. So I would hope you would participate in some capacity, because I think, you know, you're a major part of the community, substantial part, and I think it'd be important to have you as, as part of this group, so in some capacity.
Thank you, and I really appreciate, you know, being included. Is there anyone first before we, that, on the committee that would like to be part of this group? I mean, it's interesting, we have a quite a litigious set of policies already.
Absolutely.
And, you know, that's the statutory responsibility of the school committee.
Of course.
I'm not opposed to sort of having some representatives, I don't, if it's not members of the school committee, it's might kind of, it feels real weird to have community members who don't know, maybe aren't necessarily have to speak with our Paul, it just, so I'm just trying to sort of think about that. But at the same time, as you see, we have a lot of stuff going on right now on the committee though, so, I don't, thoughts from people? We already necessarily decide names tonight unless they're members of the committee that would like to do it, but since...
We would like to try to know who to make, who would make up, like who, if you're willing to participate in the committee on some capacity, so that way we can ensure that we're moving forward. We don't want to, we don't want to hold up the process here, we want to move ahead.
We are meeting on the twenty-sixth.
I want to, I think our committee needs to be part of this, should be part of it, but it sounds like it's somewhat the first time we're hearing about it, so I think everybody needs to reflect. And can you give us a better idea of when you're going to meet and how often you're going to meet, so that we can make sure...
We haven't made it yet, it hasn't been designed yet, and I'm not going to be part of it, so I can't really speak to that. I would say the intention is within, I'd say probably by January first, let's pick on that date again, that it probably would be the, if I had to say, would probably be having it seated and starting within the new year. Think of it as a resource, as something that can, can aid you in your policymaking, and another pair of eyes that can help you in this capacity.
Is there an intention to meet monthly or quarterly?
They would be able to make up their own, I think there's enough work that they probably would want to meet at least initially a little more often, because they're, they gotta figure out the size of the elephant, so they gotta figure out how they're gonna eat it, so I don't know what that's going to look like. I would say probably more often, at least the first, and then once they kind of figure out how the process is going to work for them, they might meet a little less often. So I'd probably say monthly, if I had to guess, at least for the first year, and then thereafter, they would be able to make that choice accordingly.
In evening meetings, is that what is...
Whatever they decide. They get to decide.
Cynthia is our policy guru, any thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I shared my thoughts with Travis about this, you know, as you mentioned, policy is one of our statutory... You know, as, as you mentioned, policy is one of our statutory authorities, so I've been on policy for the, for the 10 years of, of this school committee, eight years as chair. And we invite a lot of people to the table as we revise and develop new policies, with a backdrop of always making sure that we are aligned with state law, and, you know, look toward MFC, which is the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, as our guidance for our, for our initial pass-through with our guidance policies. And then invite, you know, experts within the community and within our administrators to come to those meetings to give us feedback, like Jerry Renee and Jess Beatty, Dan Clow, it just depends on what aspect of policy we're looking at. So I feel like we have quite a bit of oversight right now, I don't know how much that's classified necessarily in our process, but I, we certainly welcome other people to come to the table. We meet monthly, if that's something that they would want me to then kind of throw into the committee, for them to consider in terms of what we have for policy. To me, it's sort of like more, you know, eyes that look at something is better in, in most cases, so.
Sure.
Yeah, I welcome their feedback, so. If you're looking for me to join yet another meeting.
No, that was not my, that was.
I was going to say, I'm going to take a peek at that right at the moment, but I certainly wonder whether or not there are other people in the community who might be interested in kind of doing their telling water, you know, seeing how things are, are gone in the district, and, you know, if there's someone within our school committee that would be interested outside of the school committee member.
And I would also add to this, too, that the intention, at least from our perspective, is to look towards residents and not necessarily voters. That was one of the things, to make sure that people who are, you know, members of the community who may not necessarily have a, be able to vote in, in, in elections, but still can participate and, you know, are part of this, part of the town.
Absolutely. So why don't we do this, since this is kind of new for everyone, everyone wants to think about it, it doesn't, it sounds like anyone has, it feels like they have the bandwidth necessarily from the committee, but I, I'd encourage you, this, this week's Select Board when you discussed it and created it, so maybe, see if you watch that, think about it, if you, if you know people, talk to people, see, gauge interest, so we have some names, I think sending out an email to, to the entire school district looking for names might just be more.
It might not be, it might not be necessary, and we can sort of see, like, we can gather interest, you know, from the town side and sort of share.
But we come back and we'll have one more agenda item to, to that Tuesday meeting, to try to, yeah, I anticipate it would be quick and we can have a follow-up conversation and.
And I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions about it. I'll make sure that, you know, if you don't already have it, I'll make sure you get the, the scope and the, all of the language that we've, we've agreed to, to forming.
And there's anyone watching now from, from just the, the community that might have interest in, in serving on this, you know, feel free to send me an email.
Or, or you can contact the town administrator.
Contact the town administrator.
Yeah.
But, yeah, but we need to know this, so we could make that appointment, but.
We would share. We'll, we'll collaborate on that.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ben.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate you, you really, for all that stuff.
It's not on time, actually.
I know. I was hoping to get done before time. Very well. So the, actually, the last item on our, on our public agenda is the, just start the discussion of the, sort of the impact on graduation requirements, since the prop, no, yeah, question two, question two passed, and then the MCAS will no longer be a graduation requirement. I don't know if administration's been thinking about that, or if there's any.
No.
Okay.
Of course, we have questions about it. I do, I do think it likely will not change how it's administered in any way, you know, we've heard that it's going to still be the same format that it is right now, potentially a similar schedule and all that. Really what it means is, if our students cannot pass MCAS, however, they can pass all of our competency determinations for, that the district imposes, which may or may not change moving forward related to this, then, you know, that is really the, the change. So I think logistically, we haven't had time to digest what, and anything will do differently at the moment. There's a hope that Desi's going to give us more guidance as well, and they have indicated they will too, but it's, I think it, it kind of took people, even though they saw it on the ballot, it's, and it's not clear that people really digested it all before, you know, here, so I don't think they, people were really ready for it. So I will get you more updates as they come in, and I'm sure Hillary and your role, you probably will be hearing more about it as well.
Yeah, I think the, the initial guidance was hold and pause from the commissioner, and, and more guidance is coming.
I didn't read close enough. Does it take effect this year or next year?
It's supposed to take effect this year.
In December or something.
Yeah, December 5th. So, I mean, I think, right now, what I would say from the little bit I know, is that we would say people should still encourage their kids to do their best on MCAS, because then they're done with the requirement, because if things change, the competency determinations and other requirements could be more challenging, right? So I think it's, you know, we would say, try to get this out of the way regardless, and, and do the best you can on it as it comes.
We're going to change those before next year, right?
Yes.
And just to confirm, we are still having, and MCAS still exists in all of the grades.
Yes.
It's not, I mean, I heard from a number of people who thought that they were voting that MCAS was no provision to schools.
Correct.
And I said, that is not at all what that is about.
I think that is a huge.
I just want to ensure people that that is still happening.
Correct.
It is still happening.
Yes.
It's just not a requirement, but that we have.
Graduation.
To ensure that our students graduate successfully.
Yes, and it will, regardless of whether, if a child doesn't pass and can still graduate, it also means that the schools are not held harmless here, like, we are still impacted by.
They can still go in receivership.
Right. If students are taken seriously, obviously rankings, I mean, things that we've all talked about can be impacted as well. So yes, nothing else changes at this time, students will still take it at the same grade levels, and the district will be held accountable for that as well.
In terms of our curriculum to, essentially, to graduate the requirements, are we thinking about changing those mid-year on students, or waiting until next year?
We, I think we really need to wait for a little more guidance.
Because that would, I mean, that's not, in my mind, fair to the students.
But that, isn't that how the question was posed? They took away the requirement, and now individual school districts have to come up with a requirement, and it's effective for the graduated class of 25.
Yes, well, we could leave things as is.
Yeah, we could, I mean, that's, that's what I was saying.
But we still have our required credits and the coursework and stuff like that, that is.
Right.
Part of our.
And districts could also say that in their district, MCAS still is required. I'm not saying we would, I'm just, if that's.
Is there a way to incentivize students to take the, the MCAS seriously, so that we can sort of summon some integrity with data and usability for, for nearly.
This year.
We could choose to use it.
Well, or we could choose, could we choose to do some sort of differentiation as far as, you know, deploy a plus or, or some sort of.
As you sign with a red tan, is that you a black tan?
Sign with a little suspend. I don't know, are you interested, or are they just?
I think this is a sort of, that's where the cup for the horse, right? That's the, that's the concern with us as educators, is that it would have been ideal to have had a plan in place prior to eliminating that requirement. That's always been the challenge, and, and from the equity lens, because we're also looking at all of the assessments that we do and give, to give us data to inform our high-needs populations, our ELL, and we've showed you data this year, showing that we have challenges with some equity with some of our populations already. So we do want that data to be as meaningful as possible for those reasons, so that we can improve our programs at all times.
Are we doing any educated parents, families on still the importance of MCAS? Because if, if people are voted on this thing thinking it's going away and it's not, we got to protect our ranking and our, the quantity of data that we are collecting on this.
Yeah, we may want to consider doing some kind of thing, once we have time to digest that a little later in the year. I think the problem is, will they come and hear that message, too? I don't know. Those types of presentations aren't usually well-intended.
It's more, it's honestly, it's not even a presentation, it's more of like, just getting messaging out consistently, right, time and time again, because people don't read anything either.
All right, so more to come on, on this, a lot more to come on this. So we are accepting the policy that the committee means minutes of September 23rd. Our next meeting date is not December 12, it is November 26th. That is not a joke, that is Tuesday before Thanksgiving. And, but with that, we have reached the end of our, our public agenda, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session from which we will return for purposes of conducting strategy sessions and preparations for negotiations with non-union personnel, or conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel to discuss strategy with collective bargaining ability, and if an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining ability in addition to the public body, and the chair sets a clause, as well as to comply with the Act under the authority of any general or special law, federal grant and aid requirements. Is it someone, to somebody?
Someone.
Seven?
Second.
Okay. That does require a real call vote, regardless of how we rule, so Frank?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.